All right, all right.
Jeff makes up.
Okay. Opening the Planning Board meeting for the town of Norfolk. It's November 10th and it is now 7:40. There's been a request for a continuance of the Five Phillips Way Site Plan Hearing to December 8th, and I guess they get the 7:30 slot.
Just so you know, the Board of Selectmen have scheduled a meeting for December 8th. I don't know if you want to go to the next week?
Charging your phone?
Yes, I am charging my phone. What was that?
The Board of Selectmen are meeting on the 8th.
Oh, in here, so we would have to meet in the other room.
Yeah, we'd also be missing Jeff again.
Oh, yeah, we would be missing Jeff again. So, we could reschedule.
Fifteenth could be the next, following Tuesday.
We're scheduled for the ninth, is that what you said?
Eight, eight, yeah.
Yeah, eight, yeah.
The two for the eighth, yeah.
We could do the fifteenth.
Unless we wanted to do it the 10th without putting it off too long. Is the 10th okay with people? It's a Thursday.
I could do the 10th.
It's okay with you? We'll find out from Jeff if he can do the 10th, rather than put them off, because you know what happens when we start putting them off, week after week.
Yeah.
It's okay with you, right, John? Okay. Okay.
December 10th at 7:30.
December 10th at 7:30, correct. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, since we're not starting that hearing, I guess the Historical Commission?
Do we need to continue? Do we need a motion to continue it?
Is that what you just did?
That's what we just did.
No, I thought you would, that was the meeting for the 10th.
Yeah.
Which meeting we're talking about. All right, got it.
It's the Historical Commission that was here that wanted to talk to us, right? Yeah. Why don't you come up and introduce yourself and...
My name's Betsy Pine. I'm the chairman of the Historical Commission. Betsy Whitney is also on the Historical Commission to hear with me. The reason I asked to have this meeting is I wanted to tell the Planning Board what the Historical Commission has been doing in regards to Rockwood Road. We are establishing a National Register Historic District, and the application is a weighty process that consists of all this information that has been submitted to the state, and the state is taking their time to study it. They do a special archaeological study before it's sent to Washington DC. But in a year and a half to two years, this will be recognized as a National Register District. I think. I mean, we're just applying, but you can't apply unless the state says we are pleased to have you apply, and they set the boundaries themselves. So, the reason that I'm, I gave each one of you a copy of one little narrow section in this application, which is the historical significance, and just, I probably should have given you one other thing, and that is a map, which I don't think you have.
Oh, that's what I was just looking for.
Yeah, I can pass it around.
Well, it was in the, you could give us the full thing, right?
Yeah, Amy will do the full thing.
Oh, you did. Okay, so you have it electronically.
Yeah.
But here it is.
Yeah, you're talking about from the railroad tracks back to Boardman Street.
That's correct.
Except everything.
That's correct. I can pass this around. This is a little map. Here is a chart of the properties that are in the district. There are 17 properties. And you also have pictures. You can go home quickly after you watch the debate and see the pictures of every house that's in the district, and I have them here. I'm sorry, we couldn't get them up on the screen today, but if you want to see, these are buildings that we're all very familiar with, but when you see them as a group, they have a certain amount of integrity of the district. There are not too many buildings within the district that are considered to be non-contributing. And the main thing I wanted to explain tonight is what this does and what it doesn't do, and what a National Register District is and what it isn't. This is primarily an honorary recognition of historic resources in all the towns in Massachusetts and in the country that have local significance. Sometimes they have state significance, sometimes they have national significance, but it's a compendium. It's a register that's kept in Washington DC by the Secretary of the Interior. As far as the legal boundaries and laws surrounding this district, there are almost none. The Historical Commission, the town of Norfolk, the Planning Board, there's no particular reviews or authority that we have over the people that own these houses, which is as it should be, because if there were, no one would want to be in a National Register District. So, we're free to recognize the districts in our towns that are contributing to our history and our architectural, pure areas in our town.
Thanks.
So, this is something that we're very proud of, and I wanted to let the Planning Board know primarily because several of the houses that are in this district could be in danger someday in the future, and it's not that we can forbid people to tear them down, they can still come down, but we just hope that because of this designation and because of the value that we have put on these buildings to make them a National Register District, that people will think twice, maybe try to consider an alternative strategy that might save a building rather than just tear it down willy-nilly because it's there. Now, I just handed away my list, so now I don't know the two buildings that I'm particularly concerned about.
This is the list that you're talking about, right?
Yeah. The Frank Rose House is number two. It's called the Dupie House and Restaurant. Frank Rose's house was not only his office for many years, and he's an important person to our history, but it was a restaurant run by a lady by the name of Sarah Dupie, who we've discovered is a very, very interesting woman. And she ran a restaurant, and it was also the post office. Then there's another house right next door, and darn, I don't know which one it is. It's right here in front of me. I don't know whether it's, can't be 14. Anyway...
It's the George, the Howe House.
Howe.
John, I'm right there.
Okay.
On the other side.
It's on the other side of Frank Rose's house. I'm nervous when I drive by. I always take a long look, because I think someday maybe these houses won't be there. But anything that we can do to just remind people of the historical significance and the significance to the town of these houses, we would appreciate it if you could spread the word and ask people to consider before they take them down.
So, this district, Betsy, doesn't put any encumbrance at all on the current owners or future owners of these properties?
No. The only thing that could possibly happen is they could be removed from the district, but in that case, they probably wouldn't care about that in one iota. People sometimes confuse National Register Districts with local historic districts, and local historic districts are voted at town meeting. They're, at least they should be, very, very pure in that they're all one period, there's not too many non-contributing buildings, and people agree that that whole area is going to be preserved as it is. So, this is not that kind of a district, no district commission that'll be enforcing some arbitrary rules or anything. It's just an honorary designation. So, that's about it.
Well, I read the application, and I just wanted to congratulate you, because it was clear that there was a tremendous amount of research and work put behind the application.
Yes.
And so, it sounds like it was an interesting process to learn everything that you did. I think that was my only question, was even though there are no enforceable laws, how do the neighbors, have you reached out to the neighbors, the people who live here, how do they feel about this process?
Well, that's one of the steps in the meeting, is that as we get a little bit farther down the road, we will have a meeting with all of the owners of all the properties and tell them what we're planning on doing. If a majority of the property owners don't want there to be a National Register District, then it would stop.
Okay.
But if it's one person, that's not enough to change the, you know, the mind of the state and the local commission to, it would go forward. It would have to be a majority of the people not wanting it.
I see.
And everyone, you know, there's usually one or two that say, "No, I don't want this," but there's really no reason not to have it, because it doesn't hold the tie of their hands in any way.
So, there's no hard rule on how many have to approve or disapprove?
My understanding is that it's a majority. It would take a majority to make the state reconsider submitting it.
So...
So, if it's just one or two, they would go ahead, probably. We don't want to do something that people are not happy with. So, we just wanted to inform you that this is what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How long has this been going on? This looks like it's been in the works for a long time.
There's a lot of work that goes into it. We have been working with a consultant named Kathy Brumer. Her name is on the front page of this for over a year, and she used a lot of work that was done in 2006 on our town survey, so that all of these buildings individually had been surveyed ahead of time. So, when the state set up the boundaries, it was a lot of work putting it all together, but some of the groundwork had already been done.
What do you mean by surveyed?
The CPC funded a survey of all the architectural buildings in Norfolk, and that's in the Selectmen's office, it's in our historical office, it's in the library, and it's a big book about this big, and all of our historic buildings are photographed, mapped, described, and the history's been written down.
Was it I?
Yes, Betsy is going to say.
Okay, Betsy Whitney. And I'm 26 Valley Street in Pondville, and I'm a member of the Historic Commission.
Steve, can you get the phone back?
A project that had been introduced about 10 years ago by Harvey Boulay, who was a trustee of the library. He came up with an idea of starting a walking tour of Norfolk Center, the historic sites of Norfolk Center. And the project kind of fell by the wayside, and about a year ago, I brought it up with CPC and asked if I could volunteer my expertise and knowledge and help reignite interest in putting together and finishing his work. And so, I have been working on a brochure, which I will somehow. The plan is to have a brochure available at the public library with 10 sites all around the center of Norfolk. My point is, and sites such as Town Hill, Ware Crypt, Tramp House, Library Schoolhouse, Parsonage, Federated Church, but I'm here tonight to highlight the George, the Elijah Ware Dupie Thayer Frank Rose House, which is in the Rockwood Road District, the Norfolk Grange, and the Salmon Man House. Three of the historic sites that are in the Rockwood Road survey are in the walking tour. So, this further supports the significance of this historic district and supports our interest in keeping it alive. So, our goal, in the not-too-distant future, I do have some other people helping with this, is that folks will be able to go to the library, get a pamphlet, and do Norfolk Center by feet. I've walked it three times, and it takes about an hour, and we will have about 16 pages of more detailed information on the historic website. So, these two projects have a lot in common. So, I just wanted to further clarify that the Rockwood Road District is pretty important.
Thanks. So, I hope you'll read the little section that I sent to each one of you about the historic significance of the houses in the district?
Yep.
And there's a little summary. That was all written by Kathy Brumer, who is a really good writer, and you think, when you read it, you think, "Oh, wow, this is a historic area, which I never even was aware of before." So...
Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Guys put a great effort into this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This restaurant, does this have any connection with that big duck farm that was in town?
Oh, I'm sure there was poultry served there. But it doesn't have anything to do with the Weber Duck Inn that was on 1A. But we've got photographs of her standing out front, and, you know, Frank Rose could be looking out the window, but she's standing out front in a long dress, and there's a sign in the window that says Luncheonette. So, we think it's kind of cool.
Yeah, it is.
She was a single woman, and she owned all kinds of property downtown. So, that's it.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Steve.
Yes.
If we could, we have one more thing, if I'd like, I'd like to ask to move forward on the agenda, and that's the Bristol Pond Estates' request for release of lots.
Oh, oh, that's right. We did get the, we got the...
Complete.
We got the letter from, but were those numbers up to date, though? That's the only thing, because...
He said that was written in line.
Nothing changed, but I didn't know if the numbers were up to date.
There was more than adequate money there.
Oh. Well, we've heard that before.
This one may be true.
Yeah. Does anyone have any objection to the release of the lots at Bristol Pond Estates?
We saw the bond. Yep. Read the form here, sorry.
I have the form. We'll do that later.
Yeah. So, does someone want to make a motion for that?
So, I just want to, I know sometimes, John, you being in the business, you review some of these unit costs. Nothing raised an eyebrow with you?
No, and more so, Bob McGee sent us a letter checking with the Mass Highway specs, which he goes by, that everything was still enough withheld to complete the road if he had to. So, I have no objections to things in the lots.
So, do we have a motion?
Do we have to accept this, or have we already accepted this, the cost to complete? Yes.
We've already accepted that.
Yes, the whole cost to complete, the bond is actually just in one place. Okay.
We're just releasing lots.
So, just one motion? The final seven lots.
Motion to a release lots number four, six, seven, eight, nine, 11, and 12 from the Bristol Pond Estates subdivision, and to also sign lot release form H. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alexander Estates.
Steve, I'm going to recuse myself.
So, this is a definitive open space preservation subdivision, and this is the first hearing. So, do we have a notice?
This one here? Let's see, yes. Want to read it?
Yes, please do.
Our notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Laws Chapter 40A and 41, and the town of Norfolk zoning bylaws, and the Planning Board rules and regulations. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 10th, 2015, at 7:45 PM in Room 124 of the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, on the application of Frederickson Development LLC for approval of an open space preservation definitive subdivision plan entitled Alexander Estates. Plans by American Engineering LLP of Millis, Mass, dated October 12, 2015, located at 36 Frederickson Road. Subdivision is proposed to have nine lots. Assessors map 13 Block 46, Lot 37-1 in the R1 zoning district. There are also applications for stormwater management permit, earth removal permit, and a shade tree act hearing request, for which public hearings will be held concurrently. Plans, applications, and associate materials are at the Planning Board office and may be inspected during office hours.
Okay, go right ahead. Introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dan Merrick with American Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant. Frank Bonnaby is here, on behalf of the applicant. As was mentioned, we've submitted an application for definitive subdivision approval, along with stormwater permits, earth removal permit, and scenic road shade tree hearing. I think what I'll do is just run you through the project at this point. We can talk about some of the permit applications that we've requested. This is for the property at 36 Frederickson Road. Contains an existing single-family dwelling, 11.4 acres of land. It has been the subject of a previous preliminary subdivision approval and an open space special permit approval. And basically, the existing configuration of the land is, there's the homestead with some yard areas around it, and then the rest of the site is wooded. There are wetlands that have been previously delineated and approved by the Conservation Commission through an ORED hearing process, an isolated wetland in the northerly corner, and a bordering vegetated wetland with a small pond in the easterly corner of the property. No work is proposed within the buffer zones of either of those resource areas, so no further conservation approval is needed for the application. We are proposing to develop a nine-lot, single-family residential subdivision. It would be comprised of two dead-end extension roads. We would have an extension of Oakview Trail coming in, and also a small extension of Frederickson Road. Our lot sizes are, on average, 33,000 square feet and change. Our lot frontages, on average, are 113 feet. We have an open space parcel here that is 3.7 acres of land. This is all consistent with the open space special permit application plans that were presented to the board. We have access to the open space through a strip here coming off of Oakview Trail. We also have a parcel of land in between Oakview and Frederickson that will be deeded to the town. I'll explain that in a little bit more detail in a few minutes. There is one small, I'd like to make one note here, there is one small triangle of land here in the corner, 191 square feet. The neighbor's shed extends across the property line. So, rather than contend with that issue, and we're just going to basically carve out a parcel and offer it to the butter. It's a small parcel. It resolves an existing issue. So, that little corner is knocked out of the open space parcel. The Oakview Trail extension, I'll talk about first. This is an existing dead end for Oakview Trail, which is somewhere around 200 feet long. When we extend it, we will extend it by 264 feet, bring it to a total length of 450 feet. That is consistent with your regulations. Existing residential road, 50-foot layout, 24 feet of pavement with an existing bat tomb and escape card berm. What we are proposing to do is to match that construction with a 24-foot pavement with an integral sloped berm, which is what the DPW director prefers. It would match up with what's out there, and as part of that undertaking, we would propose to reconstruct the cul-de-sac of Oakview Trail. That reconstruction would involve a couple of things. The first thing would be the abandonment of the cul-de-sac itself, the physical portion of the cul-de-sac. We would physically remove the pavement here in this portion of the cul-de-sac, and then we would mill and repave what would be, in effect, the main road coming through that.
Can I just ask you, what is the berm on the existing roadway?
Batomb and escape guard.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
We, based on prior discussions with the board, we are proposing to extend a sidewalk from our new road extension down the existing portion of Oakview Trail, and then end out at the intersection. There is a sidewalk on the other side of Mountain View, so that would kind of complete that network. In this area here, in the cul-de-sac, we would essentially need to extend the existing driveway for this dwelling at the end of the cul-de-sac. Their driveway comes up, and it enters on the cul-de-sac, so we would extend that driveway through what will now become lawn area, and then tie it into our new, basically repaved roadway area. Just so everyone is clear, the property boundary of the cul-de-sac will not change. That's land. It's a public way. It's owned by the town. The only way that this portion of the street layout can be altered is if the Selectmen decide to change the layout of Oakview Trail. That's not on the table now. That's not up to the applicant. It's something the town could elect to do at some point in the future if they wish to, but for all intents and purposes, these areas will become lawn areas associated with that house, just like the strip between everybody's house and the actual paved portion of the street people normally maintain and use.
The owner of the property, are they aware that if they decided at town meeting to abandon that, that it becomes their property? Are they aware of that?
I'm not sure.
Oh. Are they here?
I think they are.
Oh. Are you aware of that?
Say that again.
That if the town decides to abandon that property where the cul-de-sac is, that that becomes your property?
Not aware, but not my wish.
Now you know.
So, we have proposed a traditional road layout here with a cul-de-sac, a center landscape island. We've received a comment from the fire chief indicating that he just wants to confirm that his trucks will be able to navigate around that. I will confirm that in my response to those comments. We have street trees proposed. We have a sidewalk on one side of the road coming up to the end, and beyond that, the road is pretty straightforward. What we have done differently here, as we discussed with the board previously, is we have proposed a country-style drainage system in lieu of curb and catch basin, where we have the road cross-pitched in this direction, and we have a couple of breaks in the curb, and then there is a shallow drainage swale, it's about 15 inches deep, proposed, along the side of the road that would run down through here and then tie down to the point where the runoff from Frederickson is collected, and then that would go down through our drainage system, which I'll get into in greater detail. So, we have asked for waivers in that regard to allow the cross-pitch of the road from one side to the other, to allow the roadside swale in lieu of the catch basins. And we've also asked for waivers to have the curbing be the batomb and a sloped...
I couldn't see. Your hand was in the way. Which side is it, which way is it pitched?
It is pitched towards me.
Okay.
To the right.
Yep.
Frederickson Road is, as we all know, a long dead-end road. We are proposing to extend it by an additional 154 feet with an additional 72 feet of reconstruction. That reconstruction area is basically to allow our proposed road grades to tie into the existing road grades of Frederickson more naturally. Frederickson comes up, kind of comes up a hill here and crests and starts going downhill towards the house at 36. We're going to basically pick it up at that crest and keep the road coming uphill into our site. We are proposing here, Frederickson is a 30-foot layout with a 19 to 20-foot paved width, no sidewalks. We are proposing to have a 50-foot layout, traditional for a cul-de-sac configuration. There is a waiver involved in that because of the number of homes... There is a waiver involved in that because of the number of homes that are already on Fredrickson Road. And we are proposing a 20-foot width here at the mouth for what is actually a pretty short distance, and then we run into basically the same cul-de-sac that we would have on Oakview Trail. Same dimensions, same layout, same turning radii, center island. We have no sidewalk here. We have street trees proposed.
And the 20-foot matches the existing?
20-foot.
Width of Fredrickson.
Yeah, Fredrickson's not uniform, but it's 19, 20 feet.
At that point, it's 30.
At that point, it's right around 20. We have, as I discussed, proposed a connector parcel here. I think that the board will recall that there was a desire to preserve the option of possibly, at some point in the distant future, of connecting these roads if the town saw fit to do that. It's not proposed now. It was not something that the board was looking to have done. It was not something that the neighbors wanted done. So what we did propose is this parcel G, and if you'll notice the road profile, we have designed each of the two cul-de-sacs to be part of a larger common grading scheme, so that they are graded so that if you ever wanted to build out the connection through parcel G, the grades would match up perfectly between the two end roads, and you'd have nice, uniform, consistent vertical curves, and everything would lay out. The only thing that is proposed for parcel G now is a trail, a drainage swale, and a water main connecting the two roads. The water main connection will improve water service. Oakview's a short dead end, so I can't imagine that there are many water quality issues there, but Fredrickson Road being a long dead end certainly, I would think, would experience some issues with some water quality. So that would contribute to more circulation in the water system, improve the overall functionality of the water system. And we have a hydrant proposed at the end of Fredrickson and the end of Oakview, and then just a water main connection in between. So let me talk a little bit about our stormwater management system. We proposed a series of stormwater management BMPs, a heavy emphasis on infiltration. We are proposing, this is one of the waiver requests, we are proposing to install a roof runoff system for each home that will accommodate the 100-year rainstorm, which basically effectively removes the rooftops from the overall drainage analysis. It removes them from the runoff of the subdivision, if you will. That's a standard underground system. We are dealing with Class A sand and gravel soils throughout the site. Here, on this portion, very deep, Class A sand and gravel deposits. Up here, shallower, but still very good quality material with some ledge in different places underlying it, but still there is room everywhere for these roof runoff systems. The subdivision, it's designed with a low-impact development approach, with the country drainage, with the reduced pavement widths on Fredrickson, one sidewalk on Oakview, no sidewalk on Fredrickson, an overall reduction in impervious coverage. And all that runoff from this portion, basically right from the property line through here, sheds down towards the road into our proposed swale. Our swale runs down this way. Fredrickson, a portion of it goes into a swale, but a larger portion of it is going to be picked up by a catch basin that we introduced down in the public portion of Fredrickson Road, basically down near the end of where we're going to do our reconstruction of the existing portion of Fredrickson Road. That is then piped back. They all come together, and they go through a VoTecNix unit. It's a VX 4000 unit, which is a proprietary treatment device, which I understand is the preference of the town because it can be cleaned with a clamshell bucket truck. So those are our pretreatment BMPs. You have deep-sump catch basins, drainage swales, the VoTecNix unit. And then that is all piped down through an easement into a stormwater infiltration basin. This lies in the open space parcel. There is a sediment for bay here, which is another layer of pretreatment. And then it discharges through a pipe into the infiltration basin. The infiltration basin is a broad grass basin. It is designed conservatively. There is zero discharge from the basin in all design storms, including the 100-year rainstorm, so it infiltrates all runoff, very good quality soils down in that location. This whole half of the property has very good quality soils. We have, we meet your regulatory requirements for no increase in volume of runoff or rate of runoff. There are five different design points. There's a little bit of runoff that goes off down Fredrickson. There's a very small watershed here that goes to this property to the north. There is, we analyzed a design point out to Oakview Trail just to demonstrate that this reconstruction would not increase runoff to the Oakview Trail drainage system. There is a very shallow depression here. We did an analysis just to demonstrate that our construction would not generate any flow towards this butter here to the south, and that's about it. So the drainage system is very straightforward. We exceed the required recharge volume. We reduce rates and volumes. We exceed the total suspended solace treatment requirements. We're at 98.5%. The standard is 80%. So the drainage system in all exceeds the various requirements and standards, local and state. I think I've gone through most of the waivers in my conversations. Did have a couple of waivers about, around the drainage system. There was one that your consultant has asked us to reconsider, which is rational calculations. And if, certainly if that's the will of the board, we can undertake those calculations. Those basically, we designed a few pipes that we have, which are these pipes here, using the hydrocat analysis for the 100-year rainstorm. The regs call for a rational calculation also for the 25-year rainstorm, but we can do that if we need to. You have a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, now, that whole Oakview Trail, it all slopes down towards the bottom. Is that correct?
What, what are you, the road?
The roadway, yeah.
So there will be a crown here.
Oh, that's where the crown is? So you won't have, nothing will be escaping into the existing stormwater system?
No. So all that will, all basically that will run back is what runs back now.
All right.
This cul-de-sac area. So we have a crown proposed here. This all sheds downhill. This is basically downhill all the way over to here.
In fact, it should be less because there's less impervious.
Right, right. And where is the storm drain on Oakview? Is it?
There are some catch basins down at the intersection.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So the Oakview runoff is going down towards the cul-de-sac, and some of it's going to be caught in swales.
All of it from Oakview?
All of it.
All of our new Oakview Road is going into the swales?
Now, answer this question, because one of the concerns in the plan I have is Oakview Road is, what, 200 feet, the extension?
260 feet, yes.
And Fredrickson is?
150 and change.
So why do we have a smaller Fredrickson area, impervious roadway, with this mega basin in our open space, when we have a larger impervious area on the Oak Trail, all going into a couple of swales?
Isn't it all going in here?
The swales all drain down, everything drains down to this basin.
And where is, how are the swales getting down to the basin?
So the swales run down along the road through the connector parcel.
So they're going all the way?
Over to Fredrickson.
To the other cul-de-sac.
Correct. And then it's all piped together. So all of the runoff, basically from all the developed areas here, all comes down through and goes into the stormwater basin.
Because with this small area, I'm not happy with the size of this basin. I think this basin is way too big. And just off the top of my head, we have pipes going down all the way to the sediment for bay. If that was a swale, we'd have infiltration go all the way down this 150 feet into the sediment for bay, and the same thing going from the sediment for bay down to the infiltration basin.
Well, you don't, generally, you really don't take credit for infiltration in a swale, particularly on a slope like that. That wouldn't factor into the calculations, and Mr. Bonnaby could weigh in on that, but...
We just had a subdivision pulley over here where we have 900 feet of roadway all connecting into open space. That is a total swale. There is no basin. It's all swale. That's why I mentioned it.
If you had a flat enough swale, you could take that into consideration, but this is a slope coming down from, I can show you the profile.
Oh, that's, okay.
You know what I'm saying? But I could, we could look at, you know, as I said, the basin is a little conservatively designed. You know, I have a foot and a half of freeboard in the basin.
I understand how that all works. Believe me, I do. But all I'm saying is, we've got, we've got a pathway down here from a trail, which is, which is an opportunity to get some infiltration. We've got a piping system here, and that's not a perforated pipe, correct?
No, it's a solid pipe.
So do we have an opportunity to suck up, these soils are so gravelly and sandy, why aren't we infiltrating all the way down here, all the way down here, all the way in here? Why aren't we?
You certainly could.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I mean, it's...
Because I'd like to, I worked so hard to get this open space here. I hate to see this line of disturbance cutting out the whole parcel. And then I hate to see in the middle of the open space, 20, 25% of it taken up by a basin. So I would, I would like something done to make this basin significantly smaller, to make more of our open space, wooded open space. And did you say that, did you, did you do testing on all the places we have infiltration?
We have tests scattered all over the site.
No, I understand that, but you're asking for a waiver for some of our testing. Did you?
For the borrows.
Every place that we have infiltration, have you tested there to make sure we know what the soils are and the rate, the perk?
I have tests down in here, and I have tests all across here. I don't know that, I don't have a test at every single precise location of a roof drainage system, but I've done...
No, I understand. They haven't even been sized yet, right? That's what's in the notes.
Oh, they have been sized.
The roofs have been sized?
Yeah, so the comment, and we can do this, was elevations. So they've all been sized, so the question is only the vertical location elevation-wise. So it's been asked that we establish an elevation for each system, which we will do in our plan revision.
So what type of tests are done in the basin area or in the sediment bay?
Open pits, open test pits.
Yeah, because they're not noted on the plan here.
We have...
By the end of your pen.
You've got a test hole five here.
That's it.
You've got a test hole two at the sediment for bay.
Earlier, you mentioned some ledge. Where's the ledge?
On the high side.
Over there. Well, you got, you got the test pit, the one test pit in this huge basin, it's in the slope. Actually, it's not in the actual basin where you're going to have the majority of the infiltration, I'm guessing. I guess my, just generally speaking, I think this is a, I think this is a good design, but when I look at the area of disturbance around here, and I don't know, Mr. Bonnaby is here? This disturbance area is going from the street all the way back to the rear setback of these lots. And I understand it's not an engineer's job to do a landscape architectural design, but it seems to me that these, a combination of the septic system areas, the house footprint, which isn't big, looks like a 40-foot house or something, the location of the driveways, all could be consolidated and put together in unison so that we're leaving a decent part of these front yards as wooded. On the right-hand side, all the grades are level, so there's no reason not to do that. On the left-hand side, you know, I can't see clearing all of this wooded area here and having the septic system that's going to be 100 feet away from the roof drain, which is 50 feet away from the house. I just think, I just think you've got to, again, want to drive down the street and have the same wooded effect that's on the rest of the other streets. That's what I want. And right now, with this line of disturbance, it's basically going all the way back to the, to the back setbacks of these lots. That's not going to get me the look that I want, and that's not why I was pushing the open space. So to me, there has to be a little bit of a plan to consolidate all of your areas. I don't care whether houses are nearer each lot line, where the outside lot lines are going to be left wooded. You've got an open space plan, you only have a 15-foot side setback, you've got a 30-foot front setback, you have a lot of space to take hundreds of feet of front yards here and consolidate this and leave patches of the natural woods all the way throughout the street area, to me.
Well, a couple of issues on that. Number one is, we need a septic system on every site.
I understand.
And these lots are not, not large.
I understand.
At three-quarters of an acre, a half to three-quarters of an acre. So by the time you put a house in with a driveway and a septic system, you have to clear a good chunk of the lot.
I understand, you know that, but I'm looking at the scale here, too. And I also, these septic systems, these septic systems are going parallel to the streets. Some of them could be put perpendicular to the street. I mean, there's a lot that you can do in here to make all this thing less intrusive and leave a part of these front yards natural.
Yeah, you're right. If you just turned both of these, you could have a whole wooded section right in the middle there.
Well, if you had this, this over here and this over here, you could have a whole middle section here all natural woods. And all of these perk tests, from what I understand, the Board of Health Agent only cares that one of these test pits is in the field, so I don't want anybody to go redoing test pits and, you know, causing that extra expense, but that being said, you could reconfigure these trenches, so want to consolidate this, so want to, you've got a dotted line with triangles showing your clearing area, which is basically 85% of the lot. What I would like to see is another dotted line in green showing a recon placement, a reconfiguration and placement of the driveway, the roof drain, and the septic system, in a green area showing everything that you're going to leave natural. And to me, now that's open space, because the whole premise in our bylaws of open space is you are to leave undisturbed as much wooded and natural grading as possible. And when I look at these nine lots, you're kicking the hell out of the whole thing, all the woods. And then I add to this big basin here, I know it's an engineer's job to go in and design a basin that's overkill because it's overkill, it's guaranteed to work, and it's less work to create a one that's overkill. I would like to see this really configured and come down and put infiltration wherever, we've got sandy area. There's no reason why we can't be infiltrating everywhere and make this substantially less and make this so as these people drive down here, we have wooded parts of every front yard that's natural, the full-size trees, rather than the two-and-a-half-inch calib ones of the grass trail.
Well, can we infiltrate before the sediment for bay?
You can infiltrate all the way down here.
Well, on the surface, you can, but can you put it into the ground, straight into the ground off the roadways before it goes in here?
I'm not sure.
Oh. Maybe we could ask our engineer.
Yes, I go so far.
Yeah.
We could, we could convert the pipeline from Fredrickson down to the basin into basically an infiltration trench, bedded and crushed on with a perforated pipe. We certainly can do that. And I can explore, with your consultant, with your permission, options to make this basin smaller. You know, as I said, we design to typical standards and requirements with freeboard and all of that.
No, I get all that, I get all that, but you know...
So I understand where you're coming from, and with your permission, I'll work with your consultant to explore ways to kind of reduce the footprint.
And then you could show on these lots a green line, like I said.
I'll also explore ways to preserve some treat areas on the lots in different locations where we can...
We're about to, from my hope, to require a landscape architect to be every part of a filing for subdivision of land, because they're the ones that really can take all of the engineering requirements and make it work out so it's the best setting it possibly can be. And a lot of people come to us with that already. I don't expect, although I think Dan has done a great job on the whole project, like I said, I just think with some rethinking of the placement of these things, it could be a hell of a lot different, because again, when I look at this and I see these folks and I see them coming to drive down, when they see this cleared, it's not going to be pretty. That being said, maybe you could work with him to...
Absolutely.
Bring these, you know, this, this is a 30-foot setback in the front and 15 feet on the side. Now, if these things have to be combined, whatever.
No, I follow you, I follow you. And you're right, it's got a nice graceful curve for that driveway, but if it, if it wasn't that, that nice graceful curve, they could put that septic system way up there.
Here's the clearing all the way over, all the way over there.
Yeah. Well, the septic, the septic systems for these lots here are positioned in front for a reason. When you get back into the back of the lots, you get into...
Well, we're not talking about the back of the lots. We're just thinking that they can be pushed further back a little bit from the roadway.
I'm not asking for more testing. I know that that's a big cost and it takes time, but you know, again, needing only one pit in each field, these, these fields can go diagonally, they can go perpendicular, they can go parallel, so. And you also can have driveways that could... And you also can have driveways that go over septic systems by using the enhanced pipe. So, I mean, there's a bunch of ways you could make this look a lot different than it's going to work. And I know Andrew will be happy to help.
Very much so.
Andrew.
All right. You may as well continue on.
For John Ward?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I've been through the drainage, talked about the waivers. We submitted an earth removal request. We provided some calculations. Basically, there's a... And it revolves a lot around the lots themselves. The road is filled, but when you get into the lot construction, you end up with 9,000 cubic yards of removal of materials from the subdivision. We have a shade tree hearing, and that revolves around... There aren't any trees on Frederickson that... The layout of Frederickson is narrow, so there aren't any trees there that are going to come out. There aren't any stone walls there. But on Oakview Trail at the end, there are... At the end of Oakview Trail, there is remnants of a stone wall. It's kind of at grade, it's not very prominent. And then there is a 14-inch oak here up in the corner. There is a couple of small... I think there's a 6-inch maple, a 4-inch linden, and there's a...
Those are all listed in here, right?
...road at the very end that would end up being removed to bring Oakview Trail through and extend it into the property. So, that's my presentation, Chief. If you have any other questions? I did receive comments from the town planner, from your consultant.
We'll go through all those in just a second. The... I know there's not a lot here, but could you post these trees so that all the board members can see the trees that you're talking about?
Pictures?
No, post them.
Oh, mark them.
Mark... Well, put a little sign on them that... I think that Ray knows the form that you put up, right?
Yep.
No problem.
Because, you know, you may as well drive by and check it out and check out the stone wall and...
Yeah. Well, we've been through that once already.
But you weren't there looking at the trees and the walls?
That's true. Well, we looked at a lot of trees, but not those particular ones.
All right. Okay, the placement of your trees around your cul-de-sacs there, you have to leave an opening there, because it has to be left open for emergency vehicles. It looks to me as though you have a tree sitting right in the middle of the end of the cul-de-sac where anyone that would be driving an emergency vehicle would have to drive.
Okay.
So, I think you're going to have to reconfigure those trees a little bit to accommodate emergency vehicles.
Does the chief want that?
What's that?
Does the chief want that?
I didn't notice.
I don't think he does. The only point I want to make is, he said if he's going to get someplace, he doesn't care if there's a trail there or not, he's going to get there. I think if we make this... I think if we make this too open, I think we're going to have, other than emergency vehicles, cutting through. I think that's the issue. And I was almost actually thinking of staggering some bigger pines or something in there so it wasn't a clear shot through, because this is, I think, what you're going to get, which is a problem.
Weren't we talking about putting a gate there?
Yeah, I would rather not see a gate, because gates... Gates you can open pretty easily, so, you know, it's... I think if they had some good-sized trees right on there, stagger it, just to defer everybody from coming through, I think that would be the best, because you're going to have kids that are going to go right through this thing.
Could be. If the police cars can get through, the kids can get through.
Right, right, right.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed the fire department...
Yes.
So, that they did not consider that parcel an access road. Parcel G has been recognized as a non-fire department access road, will not be considered as access.
Right. I think the police are more concerned with the kids going through than worrying about where they're going to get there. They'll get there.
What's the move in this field?
Wait, wait, wait until we're done. We'll open it to the public when we're completely finished up here. All right. So, did you have... Now, how far apart are those trees? Are those 35 feet or 40 feet apart?
I think I have them at 35, but I'll double-check them.
Are you confident you're going to be able to put the utilities under the sidewalk? This is our issue coming up again. I guess I...
Sure, one of the comments...
Put that to Mr. Bondy, because if the number of conduits are not under the sidewalk, that means they'll probably be in the grass strip, which means that we have another street tree problem again. And I noticed on here, you've got a 5-foot easement on either side.
5-foot utility easement.
I think our regulations call for 10 feet on one side, don't they?
No, 5 on each, I believe.
I believe it's 5.
On each side?
Yeah.
But I'm happy to put... I mean, I have them shown on the inside of the sidewalk. One of the comments was to relocate that to the outside of the sidewalk, so we'll do that. That won't be a problem.
So, Bob wants them under the sidewalk?
You had what on the inside of the sidewalk?
The electrical conduits.
Oh, yeah, we want it pushed as far away as possible, yeah.
So, we will relocate that.
Put it in the utility easement if necessary.
Okay.
That's what it's there for. We don't want to start getting into that conversation about street trees again. All right, now we can hear from Beta. Oh, wait a minute, are you done?
I am done.
Or did you... Oh, okay. You had... What else was there that... Oh, so you didn't cover any earth removal. You're going to cover that separately after...
I talked about it generally, but...
Generally.
I think your figures are going to go down in half after you come up with the green lines.
They will change after I revise some things, yes.
Okay. So, I'd like to hear from Beta, our consultant, engineering consultant.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. American covered most of the comments we had, or a lot of the comments we had in terms of the waivers. You need to re-recognize this as a resident, recognize Frederickson as being deficient, give waivers for the narrow width, the extending the cul-de-sac, and the no sidewalk. In terms of the drainage, he made reference to the... He'd asked for relief from performing the rational method calc. Rational method typically gives you a better...
Could you speak up, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. The rational method typically gives you higher peaks, so for pipe design, I'd like to see them do that. They sought relief from the soil board requirement. Given the number of test pits we did, they have done, we thought that was fine. And they also asked for some waivers based on the open drainage system rather than a closed system. I understand that's the board's preference anyways, so that seems all right. I mentioned the earth removal permit. We asked for 9,000 yards based on clearing the house lots.
As you go down, let us know what number you're working on. So, if you skip over and we don't know you're skipping.
I'm just trying to give the highlights. I didn't want to just read the memo. So, I'm... Sorry, I'm towards the end of page 3, comment 8. The roof runoff, I had asked them to... They've given them calculations in generic manner, assuming a square footage, same design on every lot. And we just simply asked that they give at least a bottom elevation of each galley so we can verify that the numbers work. The next section, comment 1 dealt with the berm. Comment 2 is a roadway cross-section, open drainage. Comment 3 is the earth removal permit. That all seemed fine. And then the last comment in that section deals with the street lighting. They have proposed two light poles. They didn't have any details on the lamps for those. And I know there's been some discussion with the board previous as to where those have been sited. I think they have proposed them where you prefer them at the end of the cul-de-sac, but that's also something we confirm with DPW. And as far as stormwater management, they have complied with each of the standards. They've done a pretty nice job of doing that. To the point of discussion that we've been having, as Mr. American said, the basin is oversized. You know, no flow comes out of that basin, even under the 100-year storm. They're capturing everything. There would be some potential opportunity to make that smaller if that's what the board wishes. And also, just touching on the idea of infiltrating the swale, it is a fairly steep slope. You know, usually an infiltrative swale would be a more gradual slope. They could step it, they could put some check dams in to allow for pockets of infiltrative. Or as Mr. American suggested, they could use a perforated pipe to try and create some infiltration as it comes down the slope. I'm happy to work with him to come up with some alternate solutions on...
I mean, the swale could be wider, too.
Yeah, you can widen it out, you could step it.
This thing is stepping it, it's kind of... Right. It's a lot of length there, so...
And just sort of thinking out loud, the trail connecting the open space is maybe potential to run the swale, rather than connecting it across, you know, the cul-de-sac, let it run down there.
Right.
The issue you'll have in the end is where it ends up. There's a fairly steep slope turning to the left to get to the basin, that may not be quite... That would take some thinking, but...
What is the water table in this general area?
You get a lot of room.
Which area?
The water table.
Which area?
Main suction line.
Ah, it's... Below the road is probably 30 feet, 20, 30 feet. It's 10 feet... It's about 9 feet below the bottom of the stormwater basin, which is down... Stormwater basin's at 1, 218, and the road's up at 250, so it's more, it's like 40 feet.
So, we're not going to make you do tests by the roof drain, cul-de-sac boxes?
It's very good soil for infiltration.
Yeah. So, this should work.
Yeah. Well, the only other comment I had, and I think he's fine, but on the layout plan, they had indicated the 200-foot setback for the no structure, but it wasn't shown on the grading plan with the house lot. Foundation outlines are shown. I just want to make sure that...
Yeah, I'll add that to the plan, to all the sheets.
I think you're fine, but, you know, I'd rather have it shown.
Yeah, we'll show it on all the sheets.
All right, I know that we've been interrupting you, but I'll ask John. John, do you have any other comments?
No, I'll stop them.
Walter?
No additional comments.
Jennifer, do you have any comments?
No, I just agree with John about the open space. So, this is technically... So, this is open space as well?
Yes, it is.
Well, it's on lots, but this is the open space parcel.
Right.
So, these are the lots, and those are...
But this is the limits of disturbance, and you're hoping that they keep this as wooded area, correct?
Yes.
Well...
Because that's why I was thinking that, I mean, this inevitably, this to me isn't really meaningful, open space, like it can be encroached on a lot because it's right where... I mean, it's on the lots.
That particular lot that you're looking at...
This one?
Yeah, that backyard is in the range of 90 feet. I don't know many people that have a 90-foot backyard. Well, customary is more like 45 to 50 maybe, but so I think there's a lot of room to cut back that disturbance line yet.
Right, and that was my only comment, and looking at that, is that to have really meaningful open space, you don't want to have it kind of broken up on different lots, and if it can be reconfigured or moved around a little bit, so you're getting as much...
Well, those are all private lots. Those aren't open space.
No, I know, but so then, what's green there, you're hoping that that will remain wooded.
We would require that it would remain... Anything that is green on this plan...
Right.
We will require that it stays green.
So, my comment is, it's inevitable in a lot of situations that when it's on a private lot like that, it's going to be encroached upon, and you can't police every one of those lots. So, like, if you were to kind of push, kind of relocate or push the limits of disturbance in one way so that more of that wooded area could be in the designated open space so that it's more likely to be preserved. Just, I mean, I could be way off, but I was just thinking the same thing that John was, just about to preserve as much of the open space, the natural protected area as possible in that...
Especially along the roadways.
Right. And if you can... And, right, and the stormwater BMP seems pretty big for that area, and you just wouldn't want it to be taking up a lot of that open space area. So, basically, just in line with your comments about, I think it just... I mean, I love that you had low-impact development in mind when designing this, and I like the side of the road drainage and things like that, but just thinking of placement on the site maybe can be rearranged a little bit to just maximize your forested area, because that's like your best stormwater mitigation, really, are the trees and intact forests.
Now, Ray, did you have any comments?
You've covered most of everything that I had in my memo to the board. One was that on the connector road was to add some trees to that, sort of help fill that in, because that looks sort of like a very open area. In talking about, you know, trying to do something with the swales, I think that's a great idea, in trying to add swales rather than pipe things down to infiltrate. And again, you know, if you can add more areas that are undisturbed along the road as possible, even clumped areas, you know, between lots might make some sense. In my memo, I talked about some lot numbers for certain, for each one of the lots, so I think that's pretty straightforward. Dan should be able to do that. I also suggested that a landscape architect take a look at the plan and give some input on that. I think there's certainly some value, especially on a small site like this, that you can find some gems and sort of highlight those. And then the streetlights. And I added something in here about streetlights, just more for the edification of the planning board than anything else, is that the DPW and the planning board really get to decide as to what kind of streetlights go in in town. Board of Selectmen don't need to approve it, nor do they want to approve it, so...
Well, we like to have them approve the location just because the town's going to be paying for these.
Understood.
So, therefore, we don't want to encumber the taxpayers with our decision.
And I...
We prefer to have the Board of Selectmen decide whether or not they want streetlights here.
And, you know, in talking with some of the Board of Selectmen, unfortunately, Jeff's not here, but they really...
Can you speak a little louder again?
I'll try. The Board of Selectmen are not interested really in doing that, in making that choice, so...
Oh, really?
They would leave it up to the planning board to make that choice.
Oh, all right.
That's really what I was trying to portray.
So, this is something new? This is a...
I don't know if it's new or not.
Yeah.
It's new to me, because I've only been here for a year, a little over a year. So, that being said, you covered all the other comments that I had, so thank you.
I'd leave some of that connector road natural. Looks like the grading would work, leave some of this natural and just...
That would work fine, I think, you know...
Would you leave that connector road natural and just fill the water through there?
I think it has to be regraded, doesn't it?
It's filled.
Yeah.
So, you connect the two roads, connect, it ends up being filled. So, the intention was to kind of rough grade it so that it would be continuous grading from one road to another, and then you put the trail in, you landscaping, you put the swale in. We could leave it natural, but...
Yeah, I don't think the grading really matters at this point, because if it's ever connected down the road, that's just going to be one task in completing the connection. I think if you could leave it natural, that would stop anybody...
It's just one less thing that has to be done in the future if it wants to be connected.
Yeah, but for the sake of not having kids go through there...
Well, you can drop a couple of boulders in. I mean, it just looks nicer if it's naturally wooded and ties into the lots on either side. But I would prefer to have the grading done right now.
Yeah, me, too.
And just drop a couple of boulders in there. Or for that matter, plant some trees. You know, some small trees that'll grow. But he's offered to do a piece of the work with the town in the future, let's take him up on it.
And it, and it is, and it will be a level path, that goes from one road to the other instead of going into a big depression. Okay. So, this is the point where we open it up to the public, so.
Put the microphone.
Okay, you have to have a microphone, is there a microphone out there in the, in the group? Have to use the microphone so the people at home can hear you.
Thank you. Green light means it's on. I'm Scott Bragg, and I'm from 12 Frederiksen Road. It seems like we've been at this a long time, must seem like, uh, longer for the people in the development. I'm happy that it's, uh, we've got an open space plan, been there at the street 25 years, and I'm glad that it's been, finally going to be done and, and built out. Uh, I have to say, I'm very frustrated with the discussion about the connections between the two roads. Uh, that wasn't my understanding. The gate is silly. If there is such an emergency that the fire department's going to go down there, they're not going to stop and unlock a gate, they're going to go through the gate. If they need to get through there for some reason, they're going to get through there. I continue to hear, well, well, if the town wants to push it through at some point, the citizens on those roads don't want it pushed through. We've made that clear, we've been working on that. I think that that parcel of land ought to either become open space, or added the open space, or added to one of those lots. I think that, I understand that you push the water through, that makes all the sense in the world, but, um, now we're talking about having a, you know, clear runway through there, sorry, didn't mean to hit you, and throwing up a few boulders. That's ridiculous, that's not what we want, that's not what we've been discussing, and I'd like the board to reconsider that. You would it, if it's wooded now, leave it, put the pipe through, and, and let it go. Come on, guys, let's just be done with it. I don't want to insult you, but I have zero confidence that this board isn't going to want to push this through, because I hear it, I've heard it six times here already tonight, that, well, with, if the town decides to push it through. So let's be done with this, let's put that land into the open space, or deed it to one of the other open lots, let's be done. And I've talked to the, to the chief, I'm not the official guy, chief doesn't care, I've talked to the police chief, he doesn't care, so why are we doing this?
Can I ask you a question? Well, well, let me just reply, you say you've been there for 25 years. Twenty-five years from now, a whole different group of citizens could live on those streets, they might want them connected.
I guarantee you that, Walter, they aren't going to want those roads to go through.
Well, you can't guarantee that, you know it.
Why would they want those roads to go through to increase the traffic?
Because they might want to widen Frederiksen. Can I ask a question, Dan, I think it's kind of important.
Thank you.
When we say, just so our other members know, unless, unless I'm off track here, when you say grade that connection, are you talking about grading that to, to town street specs with eighteen inches of three-inch minus gravel, and crush bank and all that, and then looming it? All right, so the point is, if this has to be, if this has to be connected, you're going to dig the whole thing up, you're going to lay us two feet of three-inch minus gravel, crush bank, the whole work, so the grading is only superficial. The whole thing would have to be dug up to put a roadway, so by having that level and not natural, it doesn't have any effect in as far as the future work to connect that.
Now, my understanding was that it was going to have that subsurface.
Well, that's why I asked.
That's, well, that was my understanding all along.
Mine, too.
Yours, too, yeah.
The idea that I had was, you know, the, the materials on site are, you know, high-quality gravel and sand, so the fills in that area would be basically gravel. So you would get to a point where you'd have, you know, everything except for your processed gravel on top and your pavements. That was the thought that I had, obviously, it's town's preference.
The way it is now cleared, that would be fine for traffic, but as far as making it a street road up to the subdivision standards, the whole thing would have to be dug up and, and new material brought in and regraded, et cetera. So.
All right.
Okay.
Point taken.
That's me.
Yeah.
No, it's just, I understand, you can, I see the kids just going around the boulders, I, I see getting calls on this all the time, that's all, I think.
Anybody else, there's got to be somebody else. Yes.
Hi, I'm Sarah McKinney, and I'm on Six Oak View Trail. I noticed on the plans that there's a, two construction entrances, one on either side of Oak View and then on Frederiksen, and then there's a stockpile area, too, and I just wanted a better understanding of what a construction entrance looks like, and do the, you know, because on the Oak View side, obviously with the cul-de-sac, there's a great little parking spot, so, for trucks, so I wanted to make sure that the trucks wouldn't be hanging out there, or if they're actually going into the entrance, and then there's equipment and things being held in the stockpile, if I'm understanding the plan right.
Well, a construction entrance is a place where construction vehicles would enter the site. It is essentially a gravel road entrance, but at the very beginning of it, where it butts the public away, we put, make the first 20 or 25 feet rip-rep, so that they don't end up tracking sand and debris out into the public way when they're coming and going through the site. So we have one of those proposed at each entrance.
But the trucks are going all the way into the property and not being parked at the end of the.
More trouble with microphones, town meeting in here, there's other places that don't have any trouble at all with microphones.
Construction vehicles will be parked in the property, not on the public ways.
Very tricky devices.
And then, there's also, on the drawings, a stone hedge on the, on the side of the left-hand side, and what that was, on the bottom left, on the, right there, yeah.
That's a little stone wall, 12 to 24 inches tall. Basically, when, when we go in here and put in our sidewalk, there's a little, there's a little hill there.
Yeah.
So in order to get the sidewalk down near the street grade, behind the sidewalk, there's a short wall proposed, right at, running the backside of the sidewalk.
So it's not like a signage wall, it's not an entrance into the area?
No, no, no.
Okay.
It's just to accommodate grading.
Okay.
You know, and like I said, it's 12 to 24 inches tall, so it's a very short wall.
And then, there's nothing going to happen to the existing stone walls that go all along the property lines?
One more time.
Okay, you have mic problems, too. Okay, so, the stone wall, I know you had mentioned that the stone wall on the, at the extension of Oak View was kind of fallen down, but there's actually a stone wall that goes the entire property lines left and right.
Correct.
So those are going to stay intact?
Those will not be disturbed.
Those won't be disturbed, okay.
Green.
And then, I just, also, if the, the tree lines, the tree planting suggestions, it would be nice if they could work with the landscape architect so that the trees being selected are more in tune to the natural environment of the trees around. There's the trees that I believe that are being identified on the plans, going down Frederiksen and Oak View, are more of a flowery pear tree, versus all of the woods in that area are more of an evergreen and oak, so it'd be nice to have a landscape architect look at that and make suggestions, so that the trees actually match the environment instead of just being plopped in.
Um, yes, I will consult the landscape architect. You wouldn't want to put an evergreen tree as a street tree, because it would get too bushy and interfere with the road, but.
Yeah, you could make it blinder a little.
Question for the board, you, you have a list, a discreet list of tree species, are we allowed to wander from that list, or is that the list?
We prefer you, you stick with the list.
All right. So, I mean, I selected trees from the list, but I will talk to a landscape architect about maybe changing some of those selections.
And I'll recommend male ginkgos, I tell it to everybody.
You're a fan?
They're too expensive, so, so no one likes to put them in. Yes?
Colleen Bresch on to Mountain Rock Lane.
I was just curious what the proposed retaining wall was, it kind of goes over the end of my driveway there, to the left, on to the left.
Down here.
Kind of goes across the tip, what is the retaining wall?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't go near your driveway, it's probably 10 feet, starts 10 feet uphill from your driveway. And what it is, is, we're going to add, we're going to bring a sidewalk down through there.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the little squiggly line that goes across, like, kind of my property, it says on this, I see it here on this.
I see.
She's on the other side, she's on this side.
I was confused about what the squiggly line is.
So that's the retaining wall, it starts here and runs up the side, and then just ends in the lot.
This is what I'm talking about, these lines.
Oh, those are tree lines, that's the existing tree line.
She's talking about that squiggly line.
Okay, so that's the tree end of my driveway.
That's just a rough approximation of the existing canopy line.
Okay, good. And we, in terms of personal, you know, things with your property, is that something we would talk to you about? For instance, Sarah and myself were wondering, like, we would, if trees are going to be cleared at our property lines, we would like to be, you know, consideration of maybe some trees being planted, you know, 10-foot trees to keep, you know, because we, we face complete woods, just to keep that kind of atmosphere. Is that something we could, you know, discuss?
I can look at that.
Okay.
We'll probably require it. I, I think that, that in open space subdivisions, it's required to put in a buffer zone, isn't it, if, if it's cleared?
I don't know that that's true.
Yeah. Thought that was a requirement, but we can require it.
Sounds like they're open to it anyway.
We'll explore that with the landscape architect.
Yeah, all right. Yes?
Lee Gibson, eight Mountain, Mountain Rock Lane. Can you talk about the area up where we are, where there's a lot of ledge, and how you plan on if you need to remove that, what kind of techniques you'll use?
So how many houses up are you, three?
Yes.
So I don't.
We've done test pits all through here, and I don't anticipate there'll be any ledge removal on any of these homes. I do expect on lot four, there will be some ledge removal, the back half of the house, the ledge is down around four feet below grade, it drops off very quickly towards the front half of the house. So that is not something that I can say, a lot of times, if you're only removing three or four feet, if it's weathered, it can just either be ripped off or hammered, it may not need to be blasted, but that's not something that we can really figure out until we clear the ledge formation off of soil.
Can we just talk about lot one, not lot four?
I know, I don't anticipate any ledge removal up here.
Your narrative says it does.
It says lot one, that's a typo, it should be lot four.
Could you talk about how that process would work, assuming that you did have to remove ledge? How does that work with the exist, existing structures and inspections and all that kind of stuff?
Well, if there was going to be blasting, that, that's a procedure that goes through the fire department, it requires a permit from the fire department, and they will come around and do a pre-blast inspection of any of the homes around the area, so that they can document the condition of your home before they undertake any blasting.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else? Yes?
Hi, I'm Jane Flynn, 26 Frederiksen. First of all, I appreciate John bringing up the points about the open space and the board's consideration of it. I'm confused now, I share Scott's sentiments about the frustration with the connector, so I'm just confused after the conversation, where is it now? What's the status of what that would look like, or is that something that's going to be considered and brought back? Is that something that they're going to consider and bring back, or what are we looking at?
The status is the way it is now.
And what is the way it is now?
It is just a, a connecting piece that the town owns, that is pedestrian-only, that if the town in the future wants to make the connection, they can.
Okay, so is it gravel, are there trees now on?
It will be loamed and seeded.
It's landscaped, yes.
I'm sorry?
It will be loamed and seeded, and I guess some plantings.
Oh, and there'll be some landscaped in there, so people can drive through.
Right.
Okay. Okay, and then, what are, when we're finished with the questions, will you tell us what the next steps are?
We'll tell you when the next hearing is.
Oh, okay, thank you.
John, 30 Frederiksen. I think the whole issue about the connectivity, the red herring, because an emergency vehicle, especially a fire truck, if they're trying to get to Oak View or out, you know, they're not going to go down Grove and then Frederiksen, they're going to go a quarter mile further down Union and go up Pheasant Hill, where it's wider and it's straighter, and they'll end up getting there faster. They could get stuck on Frederiksen, especially in the winter. So I think in 25 years in the future, it's not going to make sense to connect it, but who knows?
Well, what you just said may perfect, it was a perfect argument for connecting.
Why? It's, I don't understand that logic. The fire truck's going to get stuck on Grove, it's going to get stuck on Frederiksen, trying to make the curves, especially in the winter with the snow banks. How is that an argument for connecting?
It improves access to the lower part of Frederiksen Road, you just said it.
From where?
They're going to get stuck on Grove.
From the lower part, coming through Pheasant Hill and going up.
Oh, so you're talking about going past Grove, Pheasant, and coming around in a circle?
Well, if they come from the fire department, they'll come down Union Street through Pheasant Hill and up.
To get to Mountain Rock.
Right.
But they wouldn't do that normally to get to the lower part of Frederiksen.
If they had to, they could.
Well, if they had to, but.
That's the whole reason for having it, is if they have to.
So if it's a circular, so it's not to improve access going from the center of town to Mountain Rock?
No.
It's not going to work there.
That wouldn't make sense. It wouldn't make sense to drive that way.
No.
That's why it wouldn't be a shortcut to begin with.
Well, it'd be a shortcut from King Street to get to the train station.
No, it'd be faster up Union Street.
We've gone through that before, we know what'll happen, so.
But anyway.
All right.
As it's designed, it's not a roadway. Anybody else? Yes, right here.
Yes, Matt.
Microphone.
26 Frederiksen Road.
Microphone, please.
I didn't think I needed one.
Oh, yeah.
It's for the people at home, not for here. Matt Flynn, 26 Frederiksen Road. I'd like to ask the engineer through the board, as far as the two cul-de-sacs, are you changing the elevation on those, so that they're uniform?
What's, what do you mean?
The two cul-de-sacs now, are they going to be the same grade, same elevation? I, I mean, do you have to do cut and fill, are you changing any of those?
Yeah, there's a cut and fill, so, I mean, it's a, it's a wooded area now, so we have to cut and fill, but basically, we're, we're basically, there's a high point right here where Oak View Trail ends now, and then it's downhill to Frederiksen.
So that elevation on Oak View, then, is that going to be changed to be uniform with Frederiksen, or vice versa? Do you have to do that at all?
No, no.
As far as the house lots, do you have any idea, or propose any idea, if you're using a natural buffer between the lots?
Well, that's something that, we have some buffer areas now, and the board's asked us to explore adding more buffer areas, so that's something that we're going to be looking into.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
I just have one. No, I have another one, and it's more of a, Sarah McKinney on Six Oak View, you're going to have to extend my driveway to meet the cul-de-sac. I'm just a little concerned about that extension, so just offline, I'd want to have a conversation with who you're using and what, how that, they marry together, because if it's not a, a smooth connection, I'm going to get a puddle at a certain point of the new driveway.
Which, which house is yours, is it to the?
I'm on Six Oak View, so.
Oh, you're, you're the one that has the cul-de-sac now?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, well, we thought you were talking about the squiggly line, that that was the tree line, we thought that was the, the house on the other side of the street.
No.
Oh, okay.
So, just to have that conversation.
That's fine, I mean, just so you know, we don't have a contractor selected, we don't know yet who's going to do the work, and we won't know until the permits are issued, but we will make sure there are no puddles in that area.
Let's have that conversation. Any others?
All right. So, we can continue this to, when's our, our next meeting is on the?
The 10th, right.
The 10th. Is the 10th of, of next month too soon for you, or is that good?
No, that works.
All right. So does someone want to make a motion to continue this?
I move to continue the open space preservation subdivision hearing for Alexandra Estates until December 10th at?
7:45.
7:45 PM.
Do we have a second? Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you say aye, Jennifer? Did you say aye, Jennifer?
I did.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we're close. We're only an hour behind.
This is the compromise. They gave them what they wanted.
Yeah, yeah. Now they don't want the compromise.
Oh, I almost started, but I just... Yeah, sometimes you don't get the whole pie. Sometimes you just get the compromise.
Okay, the hell with it. We're putting the road through.
See that?
Yeah. If I hear one more time complaint about that parcel, we're putting the road through.
With a line down the middle.
Yeah, with a line down the middle.
In this town, lines down the middle means at least 50 miles an hour, right?
Oh, God.
They put a line down our street once. Once. And I called up Butch Vito, the old highway supervisor.
Paint it black.
Cars are flying down this street.
Does make a difference, it says.
It does.
We can hear you. Because they can't hear him or me, but the TV can hear us.
Yeah. You're still over, you can't tell who.
Oh, they don't know who I am.
The Jim and Tom.
Yeah.
You have to go home.
Okay, 29 Valley Street.
We'll give you another one to read here, man.
Yeah, another one that we have to have a notice of the public hearing.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass. General Law Section 40A and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaw Section F-11. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 10th, 2015, at 8:00 PM in room 124 at Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, regarding a site plan application for property located at 29 Valley Street and 7 Hill Street in Norfolk, Massachusetts. The applicant, Alquimia Ari, of Walpole, Massachusetts, is proposing to construct 10 duplex-style residential buildings that is 20 units with associated utilities, grading, and parking. The property is located in the C-1D zoning district. Reference assessors map 29 block 80, lots 1 and 8. The applicant is also requesting a special permit to allow a two-lot planned multi-lot development in accordance with Section J of the Norfolk Zoning Bylaws. The plan and application are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours.
If you want to introduce yourself.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Jamie Bissonette.
I cannot hear you.
For the record, I'm Jamie Bissonette with Prime Engineering, here on behalf of 29 Valley Street and Mr. Quigley Ari. As you referenced, we are here for a PMLB. This project's located on the corner of Hill and Valley, contains roughly about three and a half acres, a little more than three and a half acres, and it's located in a C-1D district. In this case, what we've done is we proposed 10 duplex-style units, each containing two bedrooms, each unit containing two bedrooms, so you'd have two bedrooms and two bedrooms, so four total per building. As a little bit of a precursor, we've worked with Ray on seven or eight different layouts here and found that this was what we all liked the best. So this was the direction that we went in.
It's modern.
As you can see, if you've looked through the engineering reports or the review comments, we've designed the system to handle the hundred-year storm, its infiltration. We have nice soils on site, septic system. We're planning on putting it in the rear of the property. It's one common system for all the units. We're going to run municipal water up from Valley Street up in front and tie it into the property, including the addition of one or two hydrants on site, one at the road and one on the project. I guess the way that I'd like to go with this, if it's all right with you guys, is I'd like to start with the existing conditions, kind of give you a little bit of a brief overlay as to what the site is like now. When you first arrive on the site, it's wooded, but it has a strong appearance of being previously disturbed. It looks like a site that somebody's taken gravel out of, probably sold in the past or used for roadway construction. But if you were to go out there, you'll see dips in the earth that just don't look natural. You also look and you can see some areas where the vegetation is very young, and you'll see rows of... There's topsoil with nice sands underneath it. So in looking at the site, it's very hilly and pushed around, so the majority of the site needs to be worked to flatten it out to make it usable when you're actually on site. So what we tried to do with our layout was try to stick as close to the overall existing grade as possible. So go to our grading and drainage plan. If you were to look at the existing contours behind the proposed contours, you'll see that we've kept the roadway very close to existing grade. The roadway running at between 5% and 6% roughly around the existing... I call it a road, it's actually a driveway, running at about 5% to 6% around, in which we have a high point in front of building 10, and the water traveling with multiple catch basin points over to this point, being infiltrated, and a little section coming here to the catch basin also infiltrated. In this case, we're planning on infiltrating the roof runoff. It's clean water, nice soils. We're taking advantage of recharging without treatment in those areas. We're doing storm scepter-like systems for the treatment in the catch basins. Originally, we were going to do oil-water separators, but we felt that a little bit of a better treatment would go a long way for infiltration out here. In the back, to minimize fill on site, because we're not cutting soil out, we're actually going to be bringing soil onto the site to make this work, there's a rather large drop-off on this portion of the site. So we're proposing some retaining wall structure in here, giving the back of these units some yard, but also limiting their yard area as well. Let's see...
How high is that retaining wall?
It varies in height. But, for example, in this area, this should be about the highest at 2018, or in this corner, I would imagine, is the highest. About two, call it 206, 7 feet at the highest point over in here, and it goes down along with the contours, because what we're trying to do, again, is we're trying to blend in as much with natural grade as we can.
And what kind of a wall is it?
We're probably looking at a ready rock block wall or something like that. It's a precast large block.
Oh, I know those.
You know, faced walls.
I'm not too fond of those.
Well, it's definitely something that we can talk about. It has... Structural integrity is key. The face of them, we've talked about going with a stone veneer over the front.
Oh, all right.
I believe that's what we talked about, correct? Just because the block being ready rock, they have multiple patterns that we could place on the front of it to make it aesthetically pleasing.
It's in our regulations on what the requirements are for walls, Jamie.
Okay.
And also in the area where it's more than four feet, you've got to get fencing.
Yep, and fencing would absolutely be part of this as a safety.
The detail of what's required for the walls is in the rigs there.
Okay, absolutely. So you'll notice that we've asked for certain waivers, and we actually referenced some sections in the planning board regulations, because we're not constructing a roadway. One of the items I wanted to talk about was lighting. What we've done is, at the ends of each driveway, we've placed a single roadway light, or what you'd see in a regular subdivision for a light, in layu of having large poles with distribution lights on them. We've talked about having the lights set on timers with a master control outside that the manager of the site has access to and can control the timers of those lights. So I believe that that's open for a little bit of discussion with the board on how we'd like to, you know, deal with that issue, lights-wise.
You mentioned manager of the site. These condos or these apartments?
These are going to be apartments.
Apartments, okay.
Yes, duplex apartments. All right, so now, taking a step back, looking at it, you see lot number two. Our initial intention on lot two is to donate that to the town for their affordable housing program. This should fit a duplex unit in which we can size area in the leaching field for them to tie into. I don't know if that's well-received with the town or not, but we wanted to present that. That's why we're showing it on here. The lot is presently two lots. There's a lot line that comes up over in here, separating the two, and hence the PMLB aspect of the application.
Did you get a copy of the board of health agents' letter, Jamie?
I did, yep.
So you...
Okay, good. Yep, and then today I received Beta's review letter as well.
So you were talking about putting small residential-style lights, like driveway lights?
Correct.
Is it in front of every unit?
That's correct.
In front of every building?
There would be one for each unit. So there's one here, one here, so it'd run right alongside of the driveway. Essentially, it's going to cast some light onto the driveway, the main driveway around, but the main purpose is to be able to get you inside of your house safely. This isn't really a parking lot.
And I don't see any parking, actually.
Well, we have the garage, and we also have spaces out in the front. So zoning...
Visitors?
Well, zoning calls for one and a half spaces per unit. We actually provide two, so we have 40 provided where zoning requires 30. So we're 25% beyond, but I believe...
What if someone throws a party?
Sure.
One in the garage.
That's a fair question. We would feel that if they're going to throw a party, they'll most likely park just like they do on a street. They'll pull off on the shoulder, and they'll park their car off on the shoulder a little bit, and they'll go in. And this isn't going to be a high-traffic neighborhood. There's 10 buildings, so you would expect that they would park their car, people would be able to access around them.
Well, I personally think that you have to provide some more parking, because once it starts snowing, you remember last year?
Sure.
Once it starts snowing, all those street parking spaces, those will all be gone. There's no shoulder. You have to have a small lot, a couple of small areas for people to pull into if they're visiting.
How are we going to handle the snow, Jamie?
Yeah, that's the next question.
The rubbish is going to be picked up by service, right?
That's correct.
So there's no need for dumpster spots for loading.
Yep.
The snow has to have a spot to go to.
Yeah, we actually have a very large grass area in the center here, which can handle a tremendous amount of snow. So I would expect that they would direct it towards the center.
Now, do you have a landscaping plan?
No, we haven't.
Oh.
And what we wanted to do is, before we put together a full landscaping plan, we'd like to hash out any major issues that the board or the consultants may have, and then come back and beautify the plan with trees and flowers, you know, one time then multiple. I did do a small landscaping plan on here. It's just it's not by a landscape architect. So you can see that we've done more than the requirement for street trees along the road's edge, provided mulched beds. I know, just from hearing previous meetings tonight, that landscape architecture is definitely the way the board's trending. I can't blame you for that. They do a beautiful job of enhancing a site, and we're not opposed to doing that on this project. We just want to make sure that the foundation for our plan is correct moving forward, and we can definitely provide that.
Yeah, you may want to break it up a little bit with some fencing or something along those halls. We do have an age-restricted housing complex on the north side of town that's pretty tight like this is, and they did a wonderful job with fencing out along the driveway and everything. It looks really nice.
Sure.
It might be good to break up some of the... Because it looks to me as though that's just going to be a row of houses.
Yeah, I understand exactly what you're saying. If I may, we've been working with an architect to come up with some concepts of shifted roof lines, different looks. Don't be fooled by the colors. The colors are going to change as well. The first thing that catches my eye on this is all the same color. That's not the intention of the project. We want the project to look like everything fits, but we don't want it to be the same cookie-cutter house one after another. We want to have several different roof lines, some different color patterns, et cetera. But you're right, we want to kind of mix things up a little bit and provide some privacy. One of the things that was brought up at our last meeting with the architect was possibly putting both garages on the inside to allow a little bit more privacy for the units on the outside, provide a little more daylight with windows on the outside walls. So that may be a change that we look at doing between now and the next meeting. You know, we're trying to make sure that we address all of those issues, but again, with the board, what we wanted to do is make sure that the major issues seem to be satisfied, that there's nothing that the board says, "No, no, stop right where you're at, you know, don't proceed."
All right. So anything else that you have for... You have anything else that you want to ask about? I'll go over to them in a minute. I just want to make sure that the board has finished asking their questions.
Well, it's the same setup as the last folks. You just... Landscape architect should place the building so that they're not lined up generically and looks like a project, that's all. Density is the least I care about. Density is, to me, second nature, but like on Valley Street, these should have two front elevations, correct?
Two different elevations?
No, two front elevations. You've got two fronts. You've got one that fronts on Valley Street, so that should be a front elevation, and then behind the house, the same thing we have in some other parts of the town.
I see what you're saying. So you're saying there should be...
You can't be going down Valley Street and looking at a blocked wall with eight or nine trees and the back of houses, and they're lined up and there's... I mean, there's no... This is an engineer... Nothing personal, because I think you're a great engineer. This is an engineer's plan. It's not a design plan for a project. And I think that when you're allowed to put... I think in this case, you're allowed to put 30 units on this site.
I believe you're correct.
But along with the ability to put 30 units on a three-and-a-half-acre site, which normally would be three lots, it comes with that, the design features that make this somewhat of a community. And as I said, to me, and I talked to Ray about this, the last thing, the density is second. The thing has to look like a community, not just row houses like that, and you've got a particular obligation to the Valley Street side, because that's the main street they're coming down.
Now, with Valley Street, would you be looking for driveways off of Valley?
Oh, no, no. Just the Valley Street building shouldn't look like the back of a house. They should look like the front of a house.
I understand. So you want to make sure that the aesthetics from Valley Street...
Anytime you've got a house that's facing the two streets, you've got a house that needs two front elevations.
Understood.
No.
Oh, okay. Michelle, do you have any comments?
I just want to reiterate that I share my colleague's concern about the driveway, and it was also commented by the fire chief. And I think my concern is that if you do start widening that drive a little bit, what's it going to do to the green space? And is it going to start to make it look a little bit too, you know, runway in front of the houses? So I think some careful consideration about how you meet the safety needs and yet consider all the design aesthetics is something that still needs a bit of work. I think this, as proposed, is probably a little bit too tight on that roadway.
Understood. One of the... And I believe we've talked with the fire chief, and the only discrepancy that we found in his letter was he... I believe he referenced 20-foot wide. It's 24 with 1-foot shoulders beyond that, but I understand his point. I believe we mentioned that to him, and he said still he'd like for us to look at it.
Yeah, he wants 20 feet unobstructed by any visitor vehicle parking, so you're going to have to have 20-foot clear of...
Yep.
Regardless of anybody parking on... As you had mentioned, if they tuck themselves on a shoulder, you no longer have your 20 feet.
Correct, yeah.
So that's his concern.
Well, and the other complicating factor we touched on earlier is you really do need to find a few extra parking spaces somewhere there.
They could be punched into the green space.
Yeah, we might be able to provide something in a couple of areas. We'll look at that and try to come up with a plan that may satisfy.
I just have a question. So you were saying that the existing conditions is, like, probably previously disturbed, but not necessarily wooded, just kind of secondary growth? So it is, the entire C-1D site is wooded for that part?
Well, the majority of it is. Well, the majority of it is. There, backup. And again, I, the history of the site, I'm not sure. When, when, when you walk on a site and you look at it for the first time, you kinda get a feeling for, you know, your thoughts of the site. When I walk out here, what I, and, and you dig holes and you see the gravel, sands and gravels, you think, "They probably took a lot of this out to either self or septics or build roads with," because it's beautiful sands and gravels. Nice material. So the growth in here is, you know, it's, it, there's not a lot of, um, dead trees on the ground. It's, it's very easy to walk through. As opposed to the majority of sites that I go through that you, you're getting cut with thorns and pine trees.
What's it like along Valley Street then?
Over in here, there's some tall, uh, tall grasses. There's scrub area.
Not many trees.
No, not, not nearly as many as what are up in here. But again, this is, this is still, they're spaced.
Yeah, you should, you should be careful in tread lightly because if this young lady goes out there, nineteen out of twenty people are gonna call that a wooded site.
Oh, no, it's definitely a wooded site.
This is a thickly wooded site.
It's a wooded site.
I mean, this trail's there for people, and people take it out, but this is a wooded site.
There's no que, um, no, this is without a question a wooded site. I, what I'm saying is-
I think I got you on the last hearing on the, on the previously disturbed concept, and I think you bring it up here in your, your-
Oh, no, that was for conservation with mitigation. This, this is different.
I think you better not talk about that here. This is a wooded site, basically.
No, it's clearly-
Well, that's all I need to know. I mean, unless it's like choked with invasives and going in there and clearing, and then landscaping would actually benefit it, I would just say, 'cause you had mentioned the, the, the green space on the right-hand side, where it would be grass.
Okay.
I think you, is that what you said? That would be, this would be grass and landscaped?
Well, y- yes.
Like, 'cause I'm just thinking, if it's, if it's wooded, and it, like I said, it's not choked with invasives, but there's native vegetation there, I would just, um, you know, suggest leaving it as much as possible.
That's a great point, because if, if you look at the elevations in that area there, there's a lot of space in the middle there that could be left natural.
Right.
Saves Al from putting in a bunch of extra street trees, and it, uh, uh, makes a focal point and buffers the back, the back buildings to-
They got a lot of drainage systems out in that area.
Right in here, see all this flat area?
Yeah, yeah.
All natural wooded.
Right. So that area, I mean, if this is wooded, I mean, I just heard you mention grass, and I mean, if, and if this is a fairly healthy, you know, area with native vegetation, I would suggest leaving it.
Sure. You know, the trees, the trees don't look unhealthy. When, when you, when you go to the site, and I'm sure everybody will, and you walk into the site, what you'll see is, you'll see, um, you'll see these random peaks, you know, you know, rises and, and drop-offs. And, and they don't appear to be natural-looking. It looks like, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, a machine was in there pushing earth around and excavating, probably excavating earth. I wasn't trying to diminish the, the fact that it's wooded. Now, it's clearly wooded. All of this has trees in it. It's easy walking to get through. Um, over in here gets difficult, more, more difficult, and it's, it's thinner, but thicker. And then you, you have some, I'm not even sure what you'd call the vegetation, tall grasses down closer towards Valley, near the, the old existing building.
Well, you had mentioned that you were kind of willing to work with the current topography, whether it's natural or not. So I would suggest doing the same with any existing vegetation-
Okay.
-if possible.
Sure.
That's all.
Yep.
Michelle, you done? Walter, did you have any other questions?
Well, just one. There's, you said there's an existing building on one of the drawings. That's coming down, I presume?
Correct.
Is that it?
Yep.
All right. Um, Ray, I'm gonna go to you-
Okay.
-before we go to, um, Beta.
I put a memo together. It's, uh, I think Jamie has a copy of the memo. Uh, there- let's just jump to the stuff that I thought was really salient. And that's, um, you know, the landscape architect was certainly something that I thought was, was definitely necessary on this project.
Could you speak up, Mike?
I'm trying. Okay. I was talking to them, but, um, the landscape architect was something that I definitely think was necessary.
Let us know which one you're looking at, because we don't know which one you're looking at.
Okay. Um, I, I commented on different sections, but I'm gonna start with one. There was a waiver that sought, uh, let's see. I'll, I'll start with the bottom, and I'll work out. It's probably the easiest way. Lot two, we're asking, we're showing lot two on there as an open, as a, as a potential gift to the town. Um, I'm not sure how the, the affordable housing folks are going to receive that. I, I doubt that they're going to want just a lot. They would rather have an affordable unit rather than just a lot. So I offer that out to you. The other question I have is, this is a PMLD. This is, and a PMLD has a formally associated group of lots. I'm not sure how there's a formal association between that lot two and this, this larger lot. I don't see it. You guys are gonna have to show me how those two are related. It's, it's just not there as far as I'm concerned. The buildings that are laid out right now, uh, need to be staggered. There needs to be some sort of, uh, design consideration when you look at that. To me, it looks sort of like a barracks layout, and, and it's, it's not appealing to the eye. You're asking for a waiver on number, number four. And I, I'm recommending that this, uh, this is six point one through six point five, uh, six point, uh, nine through six point twenty-four.
What is section six?
That's administration. So I, I agree with one through five, which is erosion, sedimentation controls, clearing and grubbing, right-of-way excavation, um, embankments, staking. But six point six is, is, uh, not being waived. We'll jump over to six point nine. Subgrade right-of-way. You're asking for a waiver of that. And, uh, up to six point two four. So that whole section, with the exception of six point sixteen through six point twenty-one. And that's dealing with retaining walls, guardrails, which I think are necessary both in this project, street tree plantings, which are also necessary, um, signs and boundaries, uh, fire alarm system, streetlights. I, I don't think any of those are things that you should be waiving. So, and then twenty-
Well, well, you said that the six point six one to six point six five, uh, six point six, yeah, point five.
Yeah.
Uh, you said that those deal with erosion control and everything? Why would, why would we waive that?
These are, um, yeah, we wouldn't waive six point one. I'm not sure why we would waive that. Six point six point one prior to work commencing with the subdivision, installing all erosion controls.
Yeah, we definitely want that.
So, so, yeah, those, those actually, these are actually observations. That's what I'm, that's the section we're looking at. So observation and improvements.
Oh, okay.
So this would be our engineer looking at these things. Um, so you don't necessarily need to have the engineer look at sedimentation controls and clearing and grubbing right, right away. Sorry for the miscon, the little confusion at the beginning there.
Well, they just have to check and make sure that they're in place at the beginning.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's something I would do anyway. So it's, it would be a duplication of er, effort. You, you've also, you have conservation folks that go out there and take a peek at this stuff. There's, DPW looks at this kind of stuff, too. So there's, there's more than just one set of eyes looking at it.
And the abutters will be out there looking.
And they always are looking. Those are our eyes and ears on the street many times, and they give us a call, right, Betsy? Let us know what's going on. You're asking for waiver number two, section seven point four, point three, point one, three. And this is dealing with the adequacy of lighting. I, I think at a minimum, you should be providing us with some cut sheets as to what your, what you suggest the lighting should be. I, I'm not pushing it as far as giving us a photometric design, but we, we certainly need to understand how the lighting's going to work there.
Absolutely.
That's, that's what I'm suggesting to the board.
Well, in, in your opinion, should it be a more commercial-style lighting as opposed to the residential-style lighting?
I think if the residential-style lighting has enough lumens and can produce enough safety, and it's really, we're talking about safety here.
Right.
Um, if they can produce enough lumens and make it safe, uh, I think that would be adequate. I, I don't, I don't see the need to put a spotlight,
No, I'm, I'm-
up in the air and make it look like, uh, Gillette Stadium.
I'm just thinking more of, um, uh, how long it'll last.
Oh, sure.
I mean, if you stick with residential, it might, might not withstand very much abuse. These are rental apartments.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So waiver number one, um, this is just to show where the existing buildings are, um, in the neighborhood around this site. And I, I think that's important. I think the neighbors all wanna see how this relates to their homes or their, their property.
Sure.
So I think that's a very important issue. Moving up to seven point four, point three, point two, seven. Our regulations require two inches of, uh, finished gra, uh, pavement. You're asking for one and a half, so, um, you just, we could consider that waiver. I think we've done that in the past. Since it's private property, it would make some sense. Again, existing structures, uh, and this is, uh, proposed on the next one up. This is to show existing entrances and exits. I think when you start to get into the elevations, um, we'll have a better sense of that kind of information. Then we move on to an earth removal permit and provide more information on the, on what you're gonna be doing for an earth removal, calculations, that kind of stuff.
Sure.
So that we know exactly what you're looking for. Private wells within two hundred feet of the property or any, uh, community water systems, which, which are within a thousand. I don't think there are any community water systems, but there should be some wells within two hundred feet.
Yeah, there are. There are.
So if you could provide that information. Uh, the other question I had was, how are you gonna deal with trash collection on site? Uh, is that gonna be on-site? Is that gonna be some, uh, service that's brought in to take care of that? Again, lighting design. This is the, the next comment. How is, is that gonna spill over onto neighbors? Are you gonna have adequate lighting, that, that kind of thing? Until we see some sort of lighting design, we, we just don't know what you have.
Understood.
And I think. That's it. I go, I'm gonna jump up to traffic analysis. You guys do have some, you know, you have ten units there. You're gonna have a little bit of traffic coming out of there. Some analysis of, of how adequate the existing road is, how Hill Street is, um, coming onto Valley Street, additional traffic, what that's going to do. Uh, I know there's an existing business just up the hill from there. Uh, what kind of impact you may have, what conflicts you may have with that existing business. That, that may be something you can consider. And then...
Now, what are the sightlines like coming downhill? So, now, I, I, I drive downhill Street not too often, but somewhat regularly. And, um, but I don't remember on this stretch, what are the sightlines as you come down that hill? There's nothing obstructing any views like bridge abutments or anything else, is there?
No. No.
Is it near this?
Yeah.
Ah, okay. Right up the street, but is, is it, how far away is it?
You can see it here. Here's the-
Oh, is it here?
Here's the railroad track, you know, the-
Yep.
So we all can where the S is there?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's pretty far away. It's, it's two, two lots away, right?
Yeah, that's, that's where the, the water goes under the, yeah. Yes, it's, that's a, I would say that that's a lot and a half to two lots away. No, I, I apologize. That dash line is actually the second parcel of ours, so it's one lot away.
Okay.
That dash line's part of our project. Their, our project-
That's part of, that's part of this?
That's correct. Yeah, this makes up two parcels right now.
So it's a half a lot away?
It, it, it's three-quarters of a lot away.
Oh.
Yep. I would say it's, it's a few hundred feet up the road.
What's the sightline at that abutment?
Uh, you know, I, I can't actually see the abutment from here. I, I haven't, I haven't looked for it on this area. I can tell you, when I was out here last week, um, visibility at this point right here is, is nice. I haven't, I haven't actually placed myself right out on this spot yet, though, to, to take a sight.
My concern is coming down the hill because it gets very narrow there where the abutment is. And I'm just concerned about sightlines at, when you're at the abutment.
We can check that for you. We'll, we'll get some, we'll get some information on that.
This is his lot, man?
Yeah, that's the lot right there, yeah.
And the abutment?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Jamie, uh, does this propose septic leaching here? Does this consider the, uh, the requirement for the extra fifty percent for the garbage disposals?
Yes, sir.
So you're comfortable that's gonna be a ballpark size?
That right there is, for the leaching field, we're gonna utilize a Presbyan viroseptic is what we're looking to use.
So you're comfortable that size probably is gonna be in the range?
For the primary, that's correct.
And where the, where the infiltration, uh, chambers are down here?
Yep.
You've got test holes down here to show that these are probably gonna work?
Where, we went out last week and dug additional test holes to make sure that the far ends of where we wanted to put the stuff would work.
There's a water table down there by the, uh-
We, we have yet to find a water table on site.
That's good. That's, they should function fine then.
I would imagine that's the case.
Oh, sorry we entered our, interrupted you, Ray, but go ahead and finish.
I was almost done. Um, I, I think the last thing that was, uh, you know, you have to comply with the fire NFP standards, and then, um, show visitor parking somewhere on site.
Ah, okay. Yep.
All right. Now we can get to Beta.
All right, uh, I'll try to let you know where I am going down the list, and I'm gonna skip the ones that Ray's already covered.
All right.
First off, they're on a different datum. They're on the AD eight datum, which is, I don't think it's an issue, but your, your town datum is, uh, NGVD twenty-nine.
What section are you on right now?
Oh, sorry. Very first comment.
Section three, number one?
Section three, number one.
All right, all right.
Um, so they'll just need a waiver to, to use the, the newer datum. Uh, the next one Ray covered was the extending to show other outside houses, uh, section seven, number two. Comes to the issue of the sight, sightlines from the two driveways. I assumed that you were gonna be clearing based on showing new street trees, but, um, also wouldn't want the new street trees to go into the site triangle that we're looking at. Uh, the lower driveway closer to Valley Street, we'd like to make sure that you can, from the stop condition there, see down the street to that intersection. I think where it's placed in the middle of that curve, I think your sightline up the hill is all right. On the upper driveway, I believe you have enough sightlines to see up to that abutment. I, I think it's okay, but we, it's something that should be considered carefully. Number three, um, the landscape features, walls, fences, uh, that detail appeared to be lacking in particular. The, the line for the wall was shown, but it wasn't labeled in any way in no detail as to what type of wall was proposed. Number four, again, comes to lighting. Just, I think we've covered that one already. And the general comments, uh, comment one, they're asking for a waiver from a lot of the subdivision roadway standards. And this, this is a private driveway. I, I don't think they're subject to this, to the roadway standards, although it, some of it is still germane. Particularly as you approach on the lower driveway, that's very steep. And the street standards, you would have to provide a, a one-hundred-foot level as you approach the street line. Uh, I'd like to see you do that. I, I think, like you said, now, I think it's five to six percent. It would be good design to try and provide as much of that level area as you can coming into the street. And additionally, because of that five to six percent coming down, you've got three different basins along there. And I, I like the fact that you've got three basins relatively closely spaced, but at five, six percent slope, you're gonna have a lot of bypass. I'd like to see a, of analysis of how much bypass you're expecting, so we don't-
Sure.
Have the, the runoff hitting the, the public street.
Is that just fixed with double catch bases?
A double catch basin may be required just to increase the efficiency of what they're catching, but they're gonna have some bypass, even if they're double catch basin. Comment five, admittedly, this one's kinda picky, but, uh, in your existing versus proposed analysis, you show up, the curb numbers used for the proposed is actually a better infiltration rate than the, the native woods. I just, I don't think that's gonna happen. And again, your, uh, the roof runoff infiltration chambers were sized as generic units and just sort of placed around. That's fine, but we'd like to see just a little more detail, and particularly the elevations, so that we know how it fits all, fits together. And again, it's not- And again, it's not part of our review, but the central septic system, I think your lower house lot's going to have to be pumped up there, and a lot of those details weren't in the site plan, although it may not be part of my review. Stormwater standards, you generally met all the standards. I don't think I had anything other than keeping a log for your settlement controls and you needed your illicit discharge statement. Now, I think I accidentally skipped over, I thought I had a comment in there about, yeah, sorry, I skipped the comment on making sure that your driveway radiuses and the turns through the site can accommodate the emergency vehicles, fire trucks, et cetera. I think that was the highlights.
All right. So, is the board's done? Or has some new questions come up? Board's done? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public if you want to identify yourself for the record. You need a microphone. Where's the other microphone?
I don't know. Right there.
Neither.
Yeah, the microphone.
Where?
She's going.
Oh, okay.
With a hamster charging up the battery.
Huh? It's on? Okay. Okay.
You direct your comments to us?
Yes, all right. Thank you. My name is Mary Gould. I own the property directly across the street, which is number four, six, and eight Hill Street. So I'm right opposite. I would like to, well, number one, they do look like barracks, and sorry to say that. But, and I agree that I think I would like to see some woods left there, not all grass. I also am very concerned about these people trying to make it up the hill during the bad weather. We have quite a time, even now, going, you have to kind of give it the gas to get up that steep hill. When they do reach the abutment, that only will, I have personally cleaned that abutment, I can't tell you how many times, but you cannot fit two cars going back and forth.
On Hill Street?
On Hill Street.
At the abutment?
Yes. So, I think we might have to ask that part of it taken down. I mean, that does present a big expense to Mr. Aquiliano. I'm sorry, and what else can I say? I had heard that the town was going to measure at least seven feet, they were going to put the road up seven feet wider, and that's what it really needs. And, I don't know. It's a shock to see it on paper. I have not seen it before. I don't see Mrs. Robbins' house there. Where is it? On Valley Road. Cali Street.
Oh, yes, this isn't right there.
And they'll be demolished?
Yes.
Wow. That's all I have to say right now.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Tom Martin, called to Everett Street. My property backed up to Hill Street at the railroad crossing. First of all, it looks like a barracks. Looks like a housing project. I can't believe the town would let anybody put a wall here. Why don't they just have the driveways come in this way? I can't believe they'd let them do that. The site is very difficult. It's a lot of hills and valleys across the board. There are no sidewalks on Hill Street. So I anticipate these being apartments, they're probably going to be 20 kids here. So it's going to have to be a bus stop here somewhere on Hill Street for this? And currently today, I don't know if you know, but there are three single-family homes that are on Hill Street. And I don't think it was ever the intent of the town to have Hill Street be a commercial's lot. Nobody has touched this street in 35 years. So there has to be some traffic control. Currently, at the abutment, it's only 15 feet wide. They're going to bring town water in. There is only one street light on the street. Is that in front of number four? It's very dark when you get above, going up forward.
Where is the street light? Can you point to it, where it is on the...
The street light is on, across from, I think the street light's here. That's the only street light that's on the street.
Does Hill Street have town water?
Yeah, because there's a single-family home that's right here.
So he's bringing town water in.
So Hill Street has no town water?
No. There is no town water on Hill Street at all. That part of town doesn't have any town water.
Well, they have it for the medical building. They...
So, I mean, if he's going to bring town water up to Hill Street, but I would ask the planning board to visit the district zoning for this site, because there are single-family homes that are onsite now that have been there for many years. And I don't think it was the intent for the town to have this as a commercial site for mixed use.
Well, this isn't mixed use. This is just residential.
This is, this is not single-family homes.
No, but it is residential. They are apartments. So it's not mixed use. Mixed use would mean that there are storefronts or something in there.
This is Dennis' house.
Thank you.
So I'm Marcia Martin. The sighting is, kind of right now, it is treacherous coming. When you're coming up Hill Street from Valley, this is a sharp corner, and you have to really watch it going up the street. This has to get straightened out. Coming from the railroad tracks where it was, coming down the street to the railroad tracks, you can't see. You have to almost really come to a stop. So that's something...
It's very steep, so you tend to go a little faster than you intend to.
And there's cars that have got smushed and just stopped in there for an accident. When you say this is apartment, is this subsidizing?
I don't think it's subsidized.
Market rate?
Market rate?
Two will have to be affordable.
Yeah, two will be affordable.
Right.
If we don't donate that lot to the town, then that would, it'd be too affordable.
So the rest would all be market rate, regular?
Well, we don't like taking just land. We'd rather just take the apartment as affordable.
And as you said, I know you said, you know, I know nothing about land or anything, but for the 35 years we've lived there, nobody has touched that property, so that's been all natural since we've been there. There is a stream. Is that running away from this area? Because we keep getting called on, anytime we were making any plans on our property, conservation was always trying to stop us, saying that the brook going through our property was conservation.
That's correct. It doesn't fall within the, we're not within the buffer zone of the stream.
Okay. That's my concern. But the really big concern is with and without, there could be up to 40 cars. That's going to be really tricky, traffic-wise.
Hill Street doesn't get a lot of traffic. Just the commercial vehicles in the morning, they go up and come back down. None of that. Hill Street is very quiet.
But Everett Street is very busy.
It all depends what time of day you're going to, because if you're in, like, if I'm going down at 7 o'clock in the morning, there are cars that, and there's no stop sign, they fly down Hill Street because it is going down, it's a day and night. Just something to think.
I'm behind a line of cars on Everett. I always go down Hill Street.
There you go.
Can I interrupt with a quick question of clarification? Ray, you raised the question about the PMLD joining Lot 2 with this, to make this even a feasible approach to get this many units. Can we revisit that conversation a little bit and how valid this approach is, which I think is the whole big question you're coming in and asking? Do we see this as a feasible PMLD development with this number of units on it? Is this allowable with what...
Under a PMLD, yeah, you're allowed up to 30 lots.
But is this...
Units, not lots.
You said you thought this was a stretch for PMLD.
Well, I see that one lot by itself, it's not really...
But that's not the lot that they're combining, is it?
No, they're not combining any lots. They're cutting out that rectangular piece up at the top left-hand corner.
I thought that they were combining a lot. Didn't they say that?
We're combining two lots together. It's easiest shown from the assessors on Hill Street, the dash line on the low end. We're combining lots, parcel 80-1, parcel 80-8 together.
It goes about here?
Right here.
Yep.
So that's, that makes it the PMLD then?
I'm not so sure.
No?
No, I'm still not sure, because even if it's two lots, you're combining the two lots, and then you're cutting a piece out. I'm not sure how that other piece is related to the development. And it's a planned multi-lot development. So in other words, you have multiple lots on this parcel. You've created multiple lots. They work together in some form or fashion, and so I would assume that you would have, and I'm just saying, you cut the whole parcel in half, and now you've got two parcels that now that would technically meet the minimum threshold. But to have a lot off to the side, they don't work together. It doesn't seem to make sense.
Well, based on what we just heard the chairman say, it's unlikely that the town would like to accept a piece of land, would rather have a unit. So most likely, Lot 2 is going to disappear.
Right. So you would keep your original approach where the original lot lines are, not carve out this little square?
Correct.
And take that approach instead?
That, yeah, that seems to meet the definition.
More feasible, okay.
I think that he was doing it to address the affordable housing issue.
As an option.
So that they could potentially just have the town build a couple of houses in there as opposed to just getting something that's already constructed.
Is this gas or not?
I have no idea. Is there gas in the area?
I do not believe that there's gas.
There is gas in the area we're exploring, bringing it down. If not, it'll be propane.
But it's down the road quite a bit, right?
So it will be gas?
No.
Well, no, propane right now.
Propane right now.
Is the gas on 1A?
It's on 1A.
Because I have gas.
The medical building has gas.
Yeah. Yeah, so it doesn't run in front of our site that we're aware of.
Do they have sellers?
Yes.
Yes.
Elizabeth Whitney, 29, 29, 26, Valley Street in Pondville. How, based on what I've heard, how small can a PMLD be? This has 10 buildings. How small could it be and still be a PMLD?
30,000 square foot lots.
How many units?
How many units?
I don't know if there, is there a minimum number of units?
Yeah, I think there's...
I think you could have, couldn't you just have one?
I think there is a minimum. I think there's a minimum of five.
I guess five.
Minimum's five.
I feel very strongly that three years ago, at town meeting, when residential by special permit was voted in, I supported it. I still support it. I also support my opinion that I'd rather that nobody ever built anything, but I know that's not plausible. I have to say that what is being built next door to Nate and I, I think it's going to be beautiful, and I think it's going to help the residentialness of my neighborhood come back. I personally am terrified that another commercial warehouse will go somewhere near me and us, and that would bother me. So I support the residential, and I think that Al has done a really good job designing the buildings that are going to be next door to us. And he knows me well enough to know that I am ubiquitous, and I see what's going on even when he doesn't know that I see what's going on. And so far, the project at 20 Valley Street, I think, is going well. As far as the buildings shown here, I would say that if the colors were not all the same, we wouldn't be calling them barracks. I don't agree with the barracks definition. And I happen to personally like the buildings. Now, I just want to clarify something. If Lot 2 is not accepted by the town for an affordable house, and I know affordable housing does not like to be given land and then go build a, that is not what they like, would one building satisfy one building of the 10?
With two units, right?
Or would it be two? Would it be necessary?
One building, two units.
One building, two units?
Okay. I don't agree with the idea that it would have to be, to have the abutments removed would break my heart, to see the street widened would. I would love one way. I feel that that's an option. The comments that John Weddleton made about the retaining walls, the fences, but not having backs of houses, I believe that lighting will be able to be worked out very harmoniously. Traffic, I took a walk around today. I walk around my neighborhood a lot. I know traffic is an ever-present problem. I really, in all the years that we've lived there, I don't really remember a crash at the bottom of Hill Street as it entered. I could be wrong. You've got three years on me, living in Pondville.
Somebody crashed into my fence.
There were two in my back, yeah.
On Everett Street.
No. On Hill Street.
Okay, where is your house? Are you number 15?
She's right next to me.
Oh, you live on Everett?
Everett in the back, in my back yard.
My back yard.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, for not going through you. Okay. You know, I want to follow the rules. The comments about keeping, yeah, I have not seen any machinery up there doing anything to the earth. I think the earth is the way the earth is, because that's how it is. Maybe Charlie Sharon did all that. He was always trucking stuff out of there, whether he...
We heard you. Covering the microphone didn't work.
So no machines were back there. I would, I love the idea, just keep the wooded areas as much as possible, but I vote for, I love the idea of a residential. I think it's time that we had some residential neighbors. We've gotten awful lonely on Valley Street. And I think down on Oak Pond Street, we have a neighbor and another neighbor, and I just think this would round things out. Behind house or unit building 5, 6, where you've indicated low man seed, is there no way, Jamie, that woods... no way, Jamie, that woods could be left there somewhere?
We can absolutely look at that.
I just think that more woods would help everybody. I am thrilled that driveways aren't gonna be pouring onto Valley Street. When I get the prison guards coming home, me out there picking up trash, people looking at the Pondville panel, you haven't seen that yet, Mary. You gotta come down and see that.
Now you're gonna be looking at a wall.
No, I do believe that walls can have beautiful facing. I think that they, well, you need to see some plans, we need to see some photographs. There's a lot of potential for this. Again, through you, Mr. Chairman, Tom, I would rather have woods there and have nothing ever changed. But as long as I know it's going to, I want it to be done well. It means a lot to me. I mean, I wrote a book about that area. It means a lot to me. Let me see, I've got all these notes everywhere. Oh, now, regarding Virginia's house, you do know that a demolition permit has to be applied for through the building department. Then it goes to the historical commission. We would love it if you would visit our meeting. That building was built by Virgil S. Pond circa eighteen ninety. It was the Pondville Post Office, I meant to bring a postcard, that was postmarked Pondville nineteen oh nine. The post office was in the bottom floor, it's a dirt floor, from eighteen ninety to nineteen ten. Helen Rob, you know, Love, what's his name?
Lovelace?
Lovering, Lovering. Lovering was the postmaster. He lived in the house. Helen Robbins, who was quite interesting, had a store in the front porch. It's a very historical building. It's also ready to fall down. It's about an inch and a half from the street, so, but to root around in that basement, in that dirt floor, I can't wait until we might get permission as a historical commission to go down. Nate and I have been down there with Virginia's permission years ago. I was the one that requested the place be boarded up, because kids were having parties. It was wonderful.
It's still there.
Oh, well, I don't know how they're getting in. What are they underneath? Well, it's, well, I don't-
Okay, let's move this along a little bit.
Anyway, the house will come down, which is a very sad thing, but I think that there's much that we can get from it. So I just want you to know that that demolition delay permit is a big deal. Also, cleaning out that house is an issue. That house is loaded. I know you were in there the other day, or somebody was, I saw the door off. But these are all things that are gonna take some time. So I would assume that you'd look into some of that at the beginning of the process. I had been concerned about stormwater runoff, and I didn't want it all coming down onto Valley Street, but it sounds like that's addressed. To your satisfaction, am I correct?
It appears that there's a couple of small issues, but they'll be looked at.
And the intermittent trees, how far apart would they be on Valley? I thought twenty-five or thirty-five.
Looks like they're probably about twenty-five feet.
Okay. How big, how tall are they when planted? I'd like to be alive when they, you know, get bigger.
Yeah, I, we, what we do is we specify them by caliber size, not by height. I'm guessing six to eight feet on average.
Okay.
That sounds about right, right, Al?
They grow forty years, don't they?
Yeah.
What?
We're just saying, six seems a little short. For the caliber that we require, six seems a little short.
I, as far as the comments made about you're calling them driveways, the comments that I've heard and have taken notes on are excellent comments. This is just the beginning. There's a lot of planning that has to be done, but I quite frankly think that there's a good potential going on here. I think about from trees to keys, there are other developments or other projects that are going on, and I'm hoping that this one would begin when a few other ones were finished, and maybe Al could address that at some point in time. I know that there's something rather unfinished, it sort of just started next to Rocky's Autobody, and I understand that Al is going to apply for a permit to do some work in the center of town behind Bork, so I'm thinking in turn, I know they don't put it in an order of conditions, but the duration of a project from start to finish is on my mind. So, these, I guess at this point, I've taken up. I had written down traffic impact. I don't want to mention sidewalks. I'm not gonna be the one. Okay. Mr. Chairman, shall I answer?
Please do.
I have a-
That is true, that you are supposed to put in sidewalks along your frontage.
I have two questions pertaining to two other projects that are proposed here. The Pondville Hospital Project, which I, I think it caught a little snag, because it was supposed to have-
Well, we're not discussing anything but this. So let's not start bringing anything else into it.
Well, I believe that in that project, this area here is to be a wetland?
Maybe. That's outside of our purview. If conservation wants to look at it-
They already did.
They already did?
Mm-hmm.
They already, okay. Now, the other question I have, there is a foundation that's being built, that was built on Valley Street. Is that housing also?
Isn't, wasn't that an A and R? Isn't that a-
Twenty Valley Street, that's what I was referring to.
Oh.
That, and that is what? That's housing?
That's housing.
Prefailing duplex?
I think it's a duplex, right?
There's two duplexes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Let's continue this hearing. How does the tenth sound? So you, we're up to seven forty-five?
Eight o'clock now.
We're at eight now. So does someone want to make a motion to continue this hearing to?
Yeah, I move to continue the site plan and PMLD special permit for Twenty-Nine Valley Street until December tenth at eight P.M.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have the Priscilla Ave two-lot subdivision decision en miler? Let's move these through. Now, these Frederickson Road things, I made, I couldn't make any sense of what those plans were. Do you know what they are?
What are they doing?
He called me up from California and asked.
Three little pieces together have become a state.
Yeah, it's gonna be off Strawberry Lane or whatever it's called.
So they're gonna sell that and make some money, that's the idea?
I think it might be on the plane.
It's on the cover of the magazine.
No, you can't.
You're welcome.
Saw him porting those down there.
Well, it used to be. Oh. Yes, they were.
Do you know how many times we sit and listen to other people's comments?
Exactly right. You know, and that's-
And the woman of a few words.
When you sit here for two hours, then you have the right-
You do deserve it, that's right.
... to imply on all of your questions.
Yeah.
But I will say, I'm sort of, I'm terrified. Do not take down abutments.
Did you hear Jen's comment?
No.
This is how it should free, start. All the natural woods we can see, which is a big piece right in here, this is what a landscape architect would do, and start to develop your project around it, because you've got a hill here, a hill here, a hill here. I mean, this is a twenty-foot difference in grade over the two driveways. So, I mean, this has to be redesigned, probably.
Yeah, I think actually the buildings are not unattractive buildings. I just don't like the layout that they have.
Position.
They can turn a couple of them facing each other, and there's a lot of stuff they can do in there.
This will look cool here. This will all be barren with a block wall with nothing. That's not cool.
No, no, no. And I know that, but this is only the first one.
Exactly, and that's what he said.
You should have said signed decision.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, Betsy.
So have you seen these A and R plans? I know that we were sent something.
I saw them.
I didn't see them.
I haven't seen them. I saw, I saw the written description.
People must have a good firewall to have all this stuff going into your junk file.
No, no, nobody set the, nobody set the layout.
I got them. Well, they sent it to you.
I thought I got layouts of these.
I got the layouts, and I got Gino's comments.
I got the comments, I didn't get the layout.
Like I said.
Ray, you don't by any chance just happen to have a copy of this that we could see?
Are we too pulled out? We go on Priscilla Ave, we go on Frederickson?
We will do Priscilla Ave, but we just happened to jump to Frederickson.
The A and Rs of Frederickson.
I got the comments, but I didn't get the A and R.
See, it ain't me.
Yeah, this is the A and R here.
We just got Gino's comments and-
There's two sheets there.
Come on over. All right, so, yeah, this is what I saw.
There's two, there's two different ones.
Now you're saying you saw it?
I did see this, and that's why I was saying to you, I didn't make any sense of it.
There's a difference between not getting it and seeing it and not making sense of it.
My mail only has Gino's comments.
All right. So this is Noel Drive. This is where they're taking their access from, right?
That's correct.
This is where Strawberry Hill Estates, yeah. So that comes down, so they have access from the end of the cul-de-sac, huh? Smart planning.
Correct. Mr. Winslow, all plans-
So this is Winslow's parcel, right? Here.
No, that's Jim Lehan's. Jim's was the biggest.
Here, and this is-
Well, guys, you said there's three pieces being put together into one lot. It isn't clear to me what's going on here. Can you help explain?
Sure.
There's another, there's another one here.
There's one prior parcel that was approved as an A and R, which you're not seeing today. I think it's picked up in that drawing right there.
This one?
Yeah.
Where would we be seeing it?
This is parcel three, Lot Three, let's see if we can piece this together.
See, this is why I said it didn't make any sense to me.
It did on the first one, actually. The first one showed it very nicely. Actually, let's look at this logist. So we're here, this parcel, these two parcels.
So this one, this is the Winslow parcel. This was-
No, this parcel here stays on Frederickson.
Right, but these-
So it's this one and this one?
These, these two were involved in that plan, so it cut off this back portion.
Okay.
Which is this?
No, it's this.
Oh, that's it, that's this.
Then you have this parcel here, which is, whatever that shape is, which is up here.
A romboy.
Thank you.
Which is, that's this guy right here.
Right, yeah, that connects to there.
Yeah, parcel three is this one.
And then, this right.
Is, is that what, is it this one?
I think it's that one there that gives it enough land area.
That's that one?
Yeah.
Right?
So you've got the us, the vacant land, and then the zone one, or two, and one. All coming together as one parcel. As confusing as that is, I believe that's what they're trying to do.
That's what's going on, all right, okay.
Because they cut the back of those parcels off.
Yeah.
No.
And then they connect it up with that, the piece of that cul-de-sac, which was just enough somehow, magically, I don't know how.
So it used to all be this?
Yes.
They've parked off?
It used to be, it used to be this lot, or this lot, this lot, and this lot.
Yeah.
And now they've cut out the back and they touch it up.
Put them together to make one lot.
And they got enough acreage to make it all work.
So this is part of that?
Yes.
Yes.
There's three.
It's over here, it's right here. That's that parcel.
And you will see this again when they pass the special permit for the state lot.
Actually, this one, and I'm gonna draw on this, because I have no better way to do it, this is all one parcel now.
But that's labeled parcel B.
Yep. And you gotta take them as three separate subdivisions, three separate A and Rs, and then eventually they get all combined as one lot.
Why are they labeled A, B, and three? This is A, that's B, this is three.
Well, on that one, this one's A.
No, because that's this lot here. So if you, can I write on this? This is A, this is B, and this is three. You gotta piece them together, so that joins this one. The match line is here.
Yeah, this is Dan Winslow's piece that started it.
Yes.
This is Jim Lehan's piece right here. And then there was a piece from the Sneed family, which was a small piece.
This is the Sneed here.
Right here.
Dan is here.
That's Winslow.
A Winslow.
That's Sneed. And that's Lehan.
Sneed is both of these?
Now, in our estate lot zoning, it used to say that you cannot create an estate lot. Is that not in there?
And is by combining on the Ds? I think we determined when we were discussing the Winslow-
We did, we did this months ago.
-A and R, that it's not in there.
Well, what happened to it? It used to be in there.
I don't know, we went through it, and Gino went through it, I went through it.
Somehow or other, it just vanished.
And because it's so big, why don't they just take two of the lots, and it wouldn't probably be an estate lot? Or does that not give them enough?
Yeah, you have to have more to have an estate lot.
If you know the three parties involved, they needed the three. They didn't want to split it only twice, if they could split it again.
Yeah, but if it goes against our regulations, then-
Well, that's a different story.
It doesn't really matter if they want three or not, right?
Right.
But we don't think it does.
No, we looked into, we discussed this at the very beginning.
All right, well, at least we got that.
At least we understand.
Now we understand.
We understand it, what's going on.
And there's nothing we really can say anyway, right? Because it's an A and R.
They meet the minimum, they cross the threshold, and they're in.
An A and R, so we're just-
Yeah.
Always confuses me, approval not required, but it still has to- So that was gonna be my question.
But I-
Approval not required. So, right, but you still have to, what, give your-
We have to make sure that it meets the qualifications of an approval not required.
Exactly.
But so, but you already, that was, so that wasn't already determined, that was preliminary determination by somebody?
That-
That it was an A and R?
You have to read the state law on approval not required to start to understand, and I'm serious, I mean, coming from Rhode Island, this is a whole new ball of wax.
Okay.
And I guess we need to build a lot, it just needs a zoning.
Yep.
So, do you have any comments on these?
No, no, Gino did review it, I think he gave you guys comments on it.
Yeah.
I did go through it, it seemed to meet the threshold. Like I said, I looked at it months ago when the first lot came in.
And they were corrected, they were corrected, and I have the new plans. And they were corrected, they were corrected, and I have the new plans, the new plans are in front of you.
Those are the new plans with the corrections.
So, does someone want to make a motion to sign the A and R for, where is this considered located?
Nineteen and Fred, fifteen and nineteen.
Fifteen and nineteen Frederickson Road?
Yep.
There's two separate, so probably two separate votes.
Oh, there's two of them in here?
Two separate, yeah. A and R plans.
Which one's this one?
Why isn't Winslow's in here? Why do we...
Winslow's a year ago.
Oh.
Yeah, oh yeah, it does.
Yeah, but to create the...
No, no, they still, they're still going to come back to us for a, a special permit for a state law.
Right, but...
Well, they'll end up probably having to...
What did they do with this parcel?
She's saying we already made that into A and R a year ago.
Yeah, we already put the A and R a year ago.
Oh, we did?
Mm-hmm.
Was it a year ago?
Well, how could we make it an A and R if it doesn't have frontage?
Because it doesn't need to have frontage.
Doesn't have to be buildable.
It can be, it can be an unbuildable lot and sit all by itself.
Well, yeah, but you would...
So each of these is a...
It's an unbuildable lot, though. It's not a...
And that's what it did.
It's not an A and R.
And these other two...
A and R means that you can build on it, right?
No, it doesn't. It does not make it buildable.
Approval not required.
It doesn't make it buildable.
So, and the other two that are being created this time, Sneed's and Lehan's, are also unbuildable lots.
Right. And now they'll have to do another action to make them buildable, by combining them.
So they'll have to come back to us again?
Uh-huh. So I said you're not done saying no.
All right. Which one are we looking at?
So my only thing though, Steve, if we're going to approve these, is the, one of them, Gino recommended some technical corrections.
You said that they were...
Oh, they've already done, sorry.
This is the corrected version. They, they came in this afternoon.
Okay. Thank you.
So do we have a motion for these? Let me see, which one, which one are we looking at here?
This is nineteen Frederickson.
Move to approve and sign the A and R lot for nineteen Frederickson Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, before we actually sign, let's, let's go and just do the, the whole process for the other one also. And that's this one.
That's fifteen.
Is that this one?
Every title.
No. That's, am I looking at the same one?
It's fifteen.
Same scheme, things in.
How many copies do we have of this?
Oh, this is, this is nineteen.
Yeah, so we have to do...
This is Sneed.
Yeah, so we have to do fifteen for Lehan.
Sneed, so we can...
I think it's mixed in there. There's too many for that to all be nineteen.
Well, that's what I thought. That's what I was looking for, but...
Just give us a second.
Oh.
Sorry.
And, and there's a Mylar for this, in this package.
Yes.
Ah, okay. So do we have a motion for the, for number fifteen also?
Move to approve and sign the A and R lot for fifteen Frederickson Road.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, they'll, they'll sign these on the way out.
So we have Priscilla Ave, the two-lot subdivision.
We've gone over this decision once already, haven't we?
You've already approved it.
Yeah, you had approved the decision. I just have the signature page for you guys.
Okay, on the way up, sign it. Pass it around.
And the Mylar. So we have a, a motion to, to sign, to sign the Mylar for Priscilla Ave, two-lot subdivision.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Burn Ridge Estates, the street improvements. Oh, here we go.
Still, still working with our good friend. And I do, did get a check out of him, not the full amount, but I'm trying to work with the engineer to see what we can get done and get the ball rolling. So I'm kind of back and forth between emails right now. But I think we're, we're about that close to, to get the engineering work done.
Don't hold your breath.
It's exhausting.
It must be.
It's just exhausting. It's just, it doesn't need to be that way.
Tell me your recommendation letter, just for you, John. Can't knock that.
Oh, okay. Public hearing. That, that is correct, right?
Yep.
Yeah, that's right.
John, that's it, if you would.
So do you have the Mylar for Frederickson Road also? I mean, not Frederickson Road, the Priscilla Ave also?
Yep, actually, it's right down the end of that table there.
Oh, oh, okay. So you're all, it's all laid out for us, okay.
Yes.
So any new and old business? Annual meeting? Oh, scheduled December eighth.
December tenth now.
Yeah, tenth. Fall town meeting rescheduled to December first. Everyone going to be there?
Yep.
I think I missed the last.
Yeah, you did. Are you planning to be this one?
I have plenty of...
Minutes.
Okay, minutes.
Yeah, I recommend we approve the minutes from, from August twenty-fourth meeting, September fifteenth meeting, October thirteenth meeting, and October nineteenth meeting, with the exception that Betsy has got to add the language of the zoning article as we amended it that evening to that set of minutes.
Second?
Do we have a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Got it.
Any correspondence?
I have none.
Anyone have anything to report from other committees and...
Walter asked me to give you all a copy of the minutes from the zoning working committee.
Right.
And just really quickly, as if, if I can, there were five, six issues. We started off with four. But there's six issues that we postponed hearing the Southwood Development Project at town meeting. First one was a deed restriction drafted by the arch diocese as of late. And what we're looking for is a connection between our development agreement and the, the parcel itself, the parcel of land that Southwood Hospital is on, and making sure that the agreements that we've made with the developer become binding on the land. The only way that we could think of doing that was to do a deed restriction with the arch diocese incorporating the development agreement requirements. And then if the, if the development doesn't happen, or this, this developer goes away, so do these deed restrictions, as long as this, it's not sold off to somebody else. If it's sold off to somebody else, which is one of the fears that we had, then the deed restrictions would stay in place. So they would have to have the same deal, in other words. Second thing was the water. We were, in, in talking with Hoboken, they started talking about being further and further down the line in terms of starting their development. So one of the concerns we had was that we're talking about getting three million dollars potentially for the development of a well. But with this project being pushed off four and five, six years, that money may not come to us for six years. In the meantime, we're going to be out the money to develop the well, out the two, three million dollars to develop the well. So we wanted to see some of that money upfront. So they've offered to put in place a two-hundred-thousand-dollar escrow, and as we start to spend money on the well, they would replenish that money or repay us for that work.
Well, we also agree that, that if we are unable to find additional water, the, we have water to, to cover a certain amount of time or a number of units, but not the whole development, and it will have to stop until we can find more water.
Yes.
And we would tell them what that number of units would be.
We still have more work to do in that respect.
Right.
Phasing up the development, make sure that the project's timed to a particular schedule. Right now it's a little bit vague. We didn't like that. Second is to make sure that the affordable housing, and I think the second one's more important, the affordable housing gets developed and counted by the state along with the two-hundred-twenty units of over fifty-five. So we talked about doing a one-third of the townhouses and then one-sixth of the affordable units. I think I got that backwards. It's supposed to be one-sixth of the townhouses, one-third of the affordable units. I have to correct that. And then we move on to stormwater and wastewater testing on site. This is typical of what you see in a lot of developments is they go out, Al did that on his site, and Frederickson, they did that on their site, to make sure, they do some testing, and they do more testing to make sure that what they have there is going to work in more specific sites. So we're looking for more testing and to ensure that the stormwater and wastewater systems have adequate capacity. They're looking for eighty-eight thousand gallons of septic to go into the ground, not to mention all the stormwater.
I thought it was seventy-five.
It was eighty-eight, I believe.
Well, originally it was eighty-eight, then he came back with the number seventy-five the last time we were meeting.
Okay, I wasn't there at that meeting, if you remember. Okay, seventy-five. So that, that's one of the things. And then fiscal impact, what are you saying here? So if they can't find the capacity for seventy-five thousand gallons of water, of discharge, they would remove the apartments as the first component of this development, just as, as a sideline. I think everybody is, is uncomfortable with the apartments anyway. And my line of thinking is that maybe we reduce, we remove the apartments just to get rid of them because it just seems...
The rest of its condos, right?
The rest of its condo, townhouses, and, so that would be residential and then your assisted...
I don't agree with that.
I know you don't, but that's my line of thinking. And then public safety, they're, what are we talking about here? This has to do with the existing building now. It's been fifteen years since somebody's been in that building. There's kids in there every day, but that, that's not really what we want to do. Just, just like the Lawrence Street property, try to get the, the building taken down sooner than later. If we're going to wait six years for all this stuff to happen, it's probably time to take that building down. So we're going to try and move in that direction. Bob Bullock has, has already issued a letter to the diocese to tell them to take the building down.
I haven't been in there. Is it a real safety hazard, though?
There's stuff hanging. I went in there last year. There's things hanging all over the place, you know, like these kinds of ceilings with the metal stuff hanging down. There's wires everywhere. There's all kinds of different things in there. There's needles still, you know...
Yes.
You mean someone hasn't gone in and pulled out all the plumbing and the wiring and everything to sell it?
I, I'm sure they've pulled out what they can and, but there's still, I mean, it's a big building.
Yeah, coal and, and who else? Oh, Bob Bullock went over, they said, and they were concerned also about bricks falling off, whole slabs of brick siding coming.
Yeah, yeah, the bricks aren't kind of put up like a veneer, so when the water gets behind it, it just peels right off and drops. One thing that has happened in the past two weeks now is that they're, they're boarding up all the windows, all the way up to, to the third floor of the building. So that's a good thing. I'm not sure whether they're going to comply with...
Using it for a military event, they...
Yeah, they did some military running around over there.
That didn't help, I'm sure, in terms of public safety.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think closing a building up is the safest thing they can do besides tearing it down, but... So that's the story there. That's, that's why we, we got pulled from the, the fall town meeting, is because we had these, these still pressing issues.
And, and I think one other thing to note, that the, the chairman of Selectman said that once we work these issues out, we don't have to wait till the spring meeting in order to address the zoning article, and it's conceivable that we could have a special town meeting to do it.
Sure.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
So move. Second?
All those in favor?
All right.
Notice how I snuck that in as soon as you guys stopped talking?
When are you going to take my neighbors?